Welcome everyone to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start the meeting by, if everyone could please stand and pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is Dave Atkins and I will be chairing this meeting. The meeting is video recorded by the Westwood Media Center. And if there's anyone else here who would like to record this meeting, please identify yourself so that the audience is aware. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphones. The meeting will be civil and people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be that when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. Board members will ask questions of the applicant. For public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. Items not requiring a public hearing will be at the discretion of the board. When it's time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. And I just want to reemphasize as always that it's important to use the microphones so that the recording can be captured for the Westwood Media Center because people would like to watch this at home. And if you only hear the answers to the questions, you don't really get the whole story. So that's our overview of the procedures. And Abby, do we have the agenda at the back or the procedures in all too?
Yes, we have the agenda and the procedures are on the agenda in the back of the room. We also have more copies up here if anyone needs a copy of the agenda.
Okay, so Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
No changes. So before I call the first item, I just want to describe a little bit about the process we just sort of elaborated there. But on the first item here, this is a public hearing for preliminary review of an open space residential development proposal. So it's a preliminary review. Tonight, we will decide essentially whether the applicant can proceed to submit a formal proposal. So tonight is not the end of the debate by any, or it's not the end of the hearing at all. It's really a preliminary opportunity to hear what the project's about and to give feedback, to hear from our staff who've reviewed things already, and to get public comment. So they will come and present, and we'll ask questions. Our staff will have some comments. And then I would like to open it up to the audience, to public participation. And I would just, since there are very many people here tonight, I would like people to be concise and so that we can make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to speak. We'll go through that. And then this board will discuss and deliberate over the particular issues that we have to decide tonight. There's, I think, there are going to be a lot of issues on any kind of a special permit. But for this preliminary stage, we have to make some determinations, findings of fact about the number of units, whether that complies with the bylaws. There's a waiver requested. And the other item is just the generally determining whether or not it's appropriate for this site. So there's kind of some initial things. Then there are a bunch of items where we will be providing sort of recommendations to them as they make their formal application process. So things will come up like affordable housing, the requirements for affordable housing, other items like that. So we'll have a bunch of recommendations. Normally, the planning board, we make a decision. We might have conditions. In this case, we will decide on the things that are necessary to move forward. And then we will probably make some recommendations to attempt to guide the applicant in what they are going to be proposing. So with that, I would invite the applicant to come forward and introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Terry. For the record, an attorney from Fidelin Murray. And I'm counsel for the applicant, the Green Company. So we're here tonight with an application for an open space OSRD special permit pursuant to the zoning bylaw. And this does concern the property at 45 Clappertree Street, which everyone's probably familiar. It's currently the Westwood Lodge facility. And as the chairman was discussing, this is a several-step process. The Green Company has developed a plan based on the criteria set forth in the bylaw. We then met with the Land Use Committee for a pre-application review. And you have a letter dated November 7th within your packet from them. We received their recommendations and made some modifications to the plan coming forward. We then organized a neighborhood informational meeting, which was held on December 3rd. So we are now for you for preliminary review, as the chairman mentioned, pursuant to section 8.315 of the bylaw. And under the bylaw, the purpose of this part of the review is to determine the suitability of the land for this project and to come up with a preliminary review action, which is to determine the maximum density allowed on this project and see if our plan conforms to that. So I'd like to introduce everyone, members of the team. We have Daniel Green, who's president of the Green Company. David Caligaris, who's the chief executive officer. Mark McNeil's the chief financial officer. Alan Green, who's the chairman of the company. Rick Moranis, vice president of construction. We also have Kurt Kritzow, who's the engineer. So without further ado, I'll introduce Dan Green to come up and present the project to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm Dan Green. And I'm president of the Green Company. My father, Alan, well, actually, let me start off just an outline of what I want to do tonight. So I want to walk you through our preliminary review plan submission, let you get to know who we are a little bit, let you understand our history and experience building empty nester housing and 55-plus housing, present our preliminary layout, and then answer questions. So the Green Company has been building homes for over 65 years. And Alan is the chairman, not the founder, because his father was the founder. So I'm third generation. We're the first company in Massachusetts to build for empty nesters starting in the mid-1970s, and we've been doing that for over 40 years. And that's really all we build these days is for empty nesters, people generally who are 55 and older, whose kids have left home. We started building in Marlboro and Northboro in the early 1950s in response to the GI Bill. And then we moved production to Cape Cod in the 1960s. We moved to the suburbs in Boston in the 1980s when the people who bought vacation homes from us said, hey, why don't you, we love our vacation home, could you do something for us closer to the city where we work? And for the last 19 years, we've been building at the Pine Hills. We're still building there. That's one of the largest planned communities in all of New England. And we've built in Sudbury in the early 2000s, and we're currently building in Ashland. So what are we known for? Building empty nest communities, as I said, for over 40 years. Good design, often bringing new ideas to the East Coast from California or Florida. In Falmouthport, we were one of the first condominiums in the country. And we designed an attached home in the early 2000s, a townhome, that won best home in the nation. It actually beat out a 6,000-square-foot custom home in Napa Valley. And they said that our home did everything the custom home in Napa did, aside from the location, and it did it in 1,450 square feet versus 6,000. Landscaping is a key focus to us and customer focus. We're number one in the country in terms of customer satisfaction. This is a list of some of our awards. And we're the first company to win 10 customer satisfaction awards nationwide. In addition, every community that we've built since 1970s has won some form of national design award. So let me show you a little bit of what we build. And this is an example of some entries we've done in different parts of New England. So trying to create a sense of place, you only get one chance to make a first impression. Some courtyards and porches. And so you can see this, on the top left, we have an interior courtyard. And that's a private space that's just unique to you. So we want to create those places where you can have your family-together time. And then a porch, so we promote activities within the neighborhood, people getting to know each other, and just some different scenes. This is an example of some elevations of what we build. And these homes are all similar to what we were proposing to build on the Westwood Lodge site. And this is closer up of a courtyard. This is something that's private to you. No one else has access to it. And the home is shaped like the letter C. It's inwardly focused towards this space. This is the same courtyard from the other angle, incorporating a porch, just a nighttime view of it. This is the walkway in, so a sense of privacy as you come into your house. And really bringing the outside in. It's seamless indoor-outdoor living, something we learned by visiting communities in California. And big, open spaces, light and airy, and the ability to interact with your guests as you're preparing the meal while you're dining, and even if they're outside, through those sliding doors that open up. This is a facade. And actually, when you walk through that front door, normally you'd think you come into the house, but there's a surprise. You actually come into this outdoor courtyard, and you're in an outdoor living room. And so there's an outdoor space for you to enjoy protected from the weather on three sides. So open space residential development, as part of our submission, what we have to do is to show what else could be done on this site. So a subdivision is one alternative. By right, there could be a 12-lot subdivision with one of the lots being very much oversized by about 10 acres. But it's more likely that you would get 19 to 20 subdivision lots in there. That's not what we do, and that's not what we want to do. The other, yeah, that's a lot better. The other part of what could be done here is a continued use as a mental health facility, similar to what UHS was doing two years ago. And whether it's them or somebody else, they could continue with that. So just to show people where we are, this is Clappertree Street. This is Pond Street, the Temple, Winter Street, Colby Way, and Sherman's Way. So you can see where we are. And this is the school building and the soccer field. So other uses are residential. 40B or something similar is not available now. The town has met its thresholds for that. But if at some point it were not to meet those thresholds, this would definitely be a very popular site for an apartment community or a townhome. Again, that's not what we do and not what we're proposing. We are proposing a townhome community. So our interest is in 55-plus in particular, and it's the type of housing we're comfortable with and good at. The economics for the town are good. The housing, it can be good for the town and the neighborhood, and housing can be pulled in to preserve open space. The economics for the towns are no school-age kids, private streets, trash and plowing, and additional affordable housing units produced, which serves a growing need and more protection from future 40Bs. I think we're waiting for this to catch up. There we go. All right, so one of the things we have to do is a calculation that shows what the density can be. And the pertinent numbers are that we're starting off with a 14.4-acre site. And given the calculations for the density, which, if anyone really wants to go through this, you can see me afterwards, or it's on the website, you come down to a density bonus for 55-plus, which allows us to get to a total of 68 homes. Now, that's the maximum the planning board could allow if they loved us and thought we were the best thing in the world. We're not asking for that. We actually started off at 54 homes, and then through conversations with the town, through multiple meetings, informally, have gone down to 43 and now 40. And 40 homes is what the minimum is that we really need to go forward. We had a neighborhood meeting, as Mike said. We reviewed plans and answered questions. There were about 25 neighbors in attendance. Most of the concerns related to understanding our plan and potential traffic implications. So now on to our plan. Well, this is a little less clear than I had hoped, but I can still walk you through it for orientation. It's the same as before, Clappertree Street. This is the Temple parking lot. And then this is the soccer field, Winter Street right here, Colby Way, and Sherman's Way, I think it is, or Sherman Street. The first thing we have is, we have an internal road. And the open space residential development is this area and here and all of these. Labeled 1 through 6 are what's called ANR lots. They're lots that use existing frontage and conform with existing zoning. And so those are not part of the OSRD, but we wanted to show you exactly what we're doing with the 20-acre parcel. So we have a through road that comes all the way in from Clappertree or to Clappertree and to Winter Street. So it connects those. And that becomes very important. It's a planning board regulation that the roads must go through, but it also allows people to go in either direction to help decrease the amount of traffic at the intersection because we're well aware this is a tricky intersection, as well as the one farther down. We're required to keep 50% open space, and we want to keep it contiguous and in big chunks. So that's why the soccer field, which will be maintained as open space and usable for the town, we're even showing 40 parking spaces that could fit in as well as a field right here. And then a green belt that goes around it. The green belt is required to be 30 feet, and that's what this line shows, is 30 feet off the property line. But we've exceeded it in every location. We're in the 55 to 75-foot range, depending on where you are along that green space, providing a buffer to neighbors. And we've really pulled the development back from Clappertree and Winter Streets, so you shouldn't see that much differently, except in the wintertime when you can look through the soccer field, you would see some of this housing. In response to neighborhood concerns with lots, we're actually looking at ways that lots 2, 5, and 6 could access off of our internal road and not have to have curb cuts onto Clappertree or Winter Streets, thereby reducing the visible impact as well as the traffic implications of people going in and out on that. And we'd also look at a possibility of a common driveway between 3 and 4. So having the number of curb cuts or driveway penetrations that you'd need for that, for primary access. And then we have 40 homes. 38 of them are in duplexes. So these are duplexes. They're connected by that outdoor room that I showed you in the photos. And then there's one single here and another single here. But they're still the same home styles. There are three different styles. We weren't very creative. We called them styles 1, 3, and 4. So that's what we have. And as I said before, OSRD allows up to 68 townhomes on this site. We went from 54 to 43 down to 40. And this is where we're showing right now is the 40 homes. 15% of these homes must be affordable, and so that's six homes. And there is an existing bylaw in town. It has to meet DHCD requirements, which is Department of Housing and Community Development. We've been in touch with Housing Authority in town, and they've given us four different options of what we might do. We are asking that they not necessarily be in the OSRD. So technically, that's referred to off-site, but there's some discussion about putting them on one of the lots that's here, some of the housing there, as well as other sites that we would have to identify by our final meeting, by the final review meeting, not at this one. So we are going to comply 100% with the affordable housing bylaw. So this is the house plans. I know you can't see them, but the basic idea, this is a courtyard. And so you would come into the house. In this home, you actually come in through the courtyard. That's the front door. But master bedroom, family room, dining area, kitchen, and a guest bedroom or a den all look at and focus on this home. It's really like the letter C. And so that's the interior space. This is an optional second floor for that home. Similar thing on this plan. You come in the middle, and again, you have the courtyard, letter C. You have a rear deck facing towards the open space. And it's a similar thing on this plan as well, just different variations, different ways to orient the spaces. Again, that's online if you want to take a look in more detail at the house plans. The houses are roughly 2,000 square feet. They're all two bedrooms. The town bylaw for 55-plus and an OSRD is very strict. We cannot be more than two bedrooms. One person must be 55 years or older that lives there. And we are complying with all of that. We're focused on those private interior courtyards, as well as a deck to the rear. And it's really a contemporary New England type of architecture. Here's some scenes from these homes. This is the Fresco 3. You can see big, open, airy spaces, lots of light coming in, and lots of use of outdoor spaces. Generous master bedroom. And you can even see in this master bedroom how you look out into your own private courtyard so nobody else looks into that space. Fresco 4, similar concept, different orientation, but really focusing on that outside courtyard, bringing the outside in. And then this is an aerial to show you how it works. So each home has a two-car garage, two parking spaces in front. With this home, you come in through that fake front door, and that's an outdoor living room or a summer room, into your private courtyard, and then into your home. This is a more traditional place. So you're the only one who uses this courtyard. The wall on this home is blank. And so they can't look into this home's courtyard. Again, the courtyard here for focus for the house. Back deck area is over here, and a walkway that would go around into your courtyard as well. This is very early stages, so if anyone looks at this in detail, it might not be 100% accurate, but this is showing how our new entry would be. This is one of the lots here. This is the edge of parking for the soccer field. We have a meeting house in here, and this is the view, a sense of, we wanted to keep the equestrian feeling in town, have that fence going to stone pillars, which becomes the entrance to the community. A lot of street trees. And right now, it's a straight road in, but we have a bend in the road. And having a little bit of curvature to have the homes move back and forth creates a little bit more variety. So I'm back to the main site plan here. The one thing I did want to show, there's a community benefit that's required, a community meeting area. So it's very hard to see, but this is a meeting house, and it would consist of a bathroom, the mailboxes, post office area to gather. You could have social gatherings here. It's a place for the community to get together. I imagine you tell one of your friends, we're going to go for a run. Let's meet at the meeting house, and we'll go from there. And that gives a place, a community focus for everybody. So now to the technical part, the waivers we're requesting. So this is a long list, but I'll just mention them. Do you want me to mention them directly, Abby? Is that helpful? Okay. So zoning tree locations. The zoning bylaw requires that we show trees that are 20 inches in cali, I'm sorry, 10 inches in caliber or greater. And this plan that we have, you can't see it on here, but it shows them at 24 inches in caliber or greater. And the trees are focused mostly along the perimeter. There are some, unfortunately, in where the homes are, but the bulk of the vegetation along the perimeter is what we're trying to save. And the soccer field is really the biggest benefit of that, is preserving that and allowing the town to use it forever, in perpetuity. Zoning 8.3.10.3 is open space standards. The landscape shall be preserved in its natural state for the open space. So that's all this open space. And we're asking for a waiver so this can be maintained as the soccer field and a parking area. And there's a well that's there in addition, so that would be one of the waivers. Zoning 7.3.7.7 requires a scale model of the community, like one of those ones you could put your GI Joe through or something. And we're saying that you really don't need that. These are, it's not a amassing of any structures. It's just townhomes. They're one and a half, two-story buildings. And so we're asking for a waiver on that. Section 4.4 is street location and alignment. And basically, we have to have 600 feet from all of the nearest intersections, and we have our two points. None of them meet the technical aspects of the law. And so we have, we're asking for a waiver on that. Going from our entry from Clappertree Street to Pond Street is 425 feet plus or minus. From our main entry on Clappertree to Winter Street is 165 feet. And going from, on Winter Street, going from our entrance up to Clappertree Street, it's a little over 500 feet. And going down to Colby Way, it is just shy of 400 feet. Subdivision, section 4.6 is street width and curvatures. Says they have to be 100 feet for the curvature in the road, and we meet that with all of our curves except for this one, which is at 50 feet. So we'll be asking for a waiver for that. Still something fire apparatus can make their turns and be in their lane, but it doesn't comply with the technical zoning. Property lines at a street intersection. And having rounded or cut back to provide for curb radius of not less than 40 feet. We're trying to keep this a smaller feeling as you come into the community. And so we would ask for a waiver that it doesn't need to be quite that wide. Pavement width. And this one requires a 22-foot-wide paved width. It was unclear to us if that included the Cape Cod berm or not, so we'd like to have that include the Cape Cod berm if it can. The Cape Cod berm is one foot on either side, so it would take it, I'm not sure of the town's definition, if it's 24 feet or if it's 22 feet to the back of the Cape Cod berm. Section 5.0 of subdivision is roadway improvements. And 5.8.1 says that sidewalks shall have a width not less than five feet. We're showing a sidewalk on one side of the road here, and we're asking for a waiver on the second side. And we're showing this sidewalk at four feet, not five feet. And then the last one is that grass plots must be six feet from the edge of the road. And in order to keep this community tighter and more compact, we're asking for a waiver on that. And we'll have much more details on the landscaping plan when we get to the final stage. So that's it for our list of waivers. We believe this will be a unique and special place for Westwood. There's really nothing else like it in town. There's a definite need for keeping people 55-plus in the community, something that's well-done and well-built. The roads and utilities are private. The community maintains them at no cost to the town, including the trash pickup. Roads and utilities are private. It's increasing the affordable home inventory. And the two-bedroom homes in 55-plus ensures few of any schoolchildren while also increasing the tax basis to the town. And the other thing that I'd like to let people know is that we built a community very similar to this in Sudbury. It's called Dudley Brook Preserve. And I encourage everybody who is concerned and wants to see what these look like, you can actually see these homes. They're right there at 40 Tall Pine Road. So please take a look, especially before we come back to the final presentation, which hopefully will be sometime in February. And I'd like to open it up to questions now.
All right, thank you. Abby, do we have staff comments or peer reviewers?
We did not hire a peer review at this stage. Phil Perdis of Beta Group is here tonight. He reviewed it on behalf of the engineering and public works department. I did also circulate to staff. So in your packet, you had the staff memo and comments from staff that reviewed this application. Let's see. Conservation agent did provide comments that this project, when it goes forward, does require a filing with the Conservation Commission under the stormwater bylaw. So that would need to be filed with them, a land disturbance permit. There's the demolition of two of the structures that were constructed prior to 1910. Those would also require a hearing and filing with the Historical Commission under the historical structure demolition bylaw. Public Works did provide comments. They would like to see the planning board and the developer during the special permit stage consider connections to existing sidewalks from this property to connect to existing sidewalks. Right now, there's a sidewalk on Colby Way and then out on Clappertree, but it does not go all the way around on Winter Street. Yes. So it doesn't go the whole way around the corner. So they've asked for that consideration. So they've asked for that consideration. We need to look at the full estimate and how much that would cost or consideration to any kind of intersection improvement with the comments from Public Works. We did also have a memo from the housing agent that talked a little bit more in detail about some of the affordable housing requirement in your zoning bylaw and then suggested some options for consideration if you were going to consider the applicant's waiver request to have him not provided within the OSRD development. I don't know if you want to get into all those right now or if you want to go through some of the waivers. And we have Phil tonight who did review this application.
Phil, did you have anything that you wanted to talk to right away or do you want to wait for us to get into that? I think you could kind of give a quick summary of that.
For the record, Phil Paradis with Beta Group, acting as the town engineer. So we briefly provided a brief memo to outline some thoughts relative to waivers and additional comments to be considered going forward. So relative to the waivers of the tree diameter issue, the majority of the trees are within the A and R lots or the open space. You know, I don't know what the benefit of providing additional sized trees, 10-inch trees. The offset distance relative to intersections, they're reusing existing driveways. We would just recommend that crash data be evaluated and make sure that it's not an issue now and going forward. So the radius issue is it's required 150 feet. They're reducing it to 50 feet. We just recommend that make sure that the site distance is adequate around that corner so that no one's surprised by oncoming vehicles, et cetera, and adequate speed limit is maintained. Curb radius, we just defer that to the fire department. Obviously during formal plan submission, there would be a turning radius exhibit to show that their radius works, that's the size they designed. Relative to the street width, typically it's measured from inside to inside. A modified Cape Cod berm is a foot wide. So effectively, the road would be 20 feet wide as opposed to 22 feet. Four-foot wide sidewalk on one side. You know, I think this may be a community where couples walk together. A little bit wider walkway would make it easier for them to stay on the sidewalk. That's my comment on that. And also, there's, they do do a mid driveway crossback over for the last like 200 feet, just past the parking lot right there. We recommend just staying on one side. We don't really want to encourage people to cross unless it's fundamental to their operations. And then a variable width, we defer that to your opinion. Some of the comments that we would recommend reviewing before going forward is confirm that the meeting house is a specific requirement for what a structure is allowed in an open space. And I wasn't familiar with what exactly that structure was going to contain. So I just want to make sure that that meets the requirement. And I think it's auxiliary to the open space area, not necessarily to the housing development. So as was pointed out, these are just preliminary plans, layout of roads and buildings. There is no formal stormwater design associated with this. It's going to require some space somewhere, probably in the open space for stormwater basins of some sort to mitigate the impacts. So we just want to make sure that that's counted. I don't think you can count that in the open space. In connection with the sidewalk, we just make sure that there's a crosswalk at Winter Street connecting the sidewalk. The sidewalk is actually on the other side of Winter Street, correct? And then obviously, the two-bedroom, they showed some great plans. We just want to make sure that they can't be converted to, additional rooms can't be converted to a third bedroom. So, and relative to the open space, right now, the parking for the soccer field is actually on the other side of that main drive. So if you flip it and put the parking on the, what's that, the east side, it takes away a significant portion of the soccer field. So they would need to have to push the soccer field out because soccer field doesn't take up that whole green space. So we just want to consider possible other parking options to not go push the soccer field further toward Winter Street and also provide the parking. Yeah, and I already talked about the Mizraq crosswalk. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Are there, do board members have any specific questions or could we open it up to public questions? We'll come back to more specific questions, I'm sure. But if no one has anything immediate, I would ask, are there people, are there residents who would like to ask questions about this or have comments? If you could line up by the podium and introduce your name and address and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'm Peter Fen, resident of the town for approximately 20 years. I live at 53 Milk Street, which is down the other end of Clapboard Street. It's not directly impacted by this project as some of the abutters may be, but the traffic on Clapboard Street will be affected greatly, I think. I don't know what level of detail you want at this fairly preliminary stage, but I do have some comments. As a preliminary matter, I would urge the board to require peer review both as to traffic and stormwater sewer and water. I don't know. It's very preliminary. The stormwater will have to be disposed of on-site. You've got to look at permeability, whether you're going to require storm scepters or swales or rain gardens or what you're going to do. But water handling is going to be very critical here. And I urge you to require the developer to get you the peer review you'll need to evaluate both stormwater and traffic. I understand that it'll be very interesting to see the traffic study when it's out and the trip generation data and the times. It's 55-plus, so it doesn't tend to contribute to peak traffic as much as some other kinds of development will, but it's still a very busy street. And the Winter Street intersection is already, as I'm sure you all know, very problematic. The site distances are less than required and some traffic calming or other kinds of solutions and mitigation should probably be required. And both their traffic engineer and your peer review engineer should be looking at that. That's a preliminary matter. I'd also like to say that while I don't know the Green Company people very well, I was at the last meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with Dan Green prior to tonight's hearing on an individual level, which was very nice to afford me some time. This is basically a terrific project and a very good company. They have a great reputation in the greater Boston area and beyond. They've got a long history of being very reputable and building very good projects. And this is the kind of project Westwood probably needs. We've got a lot of aging population here, a lot of empty nesters in town, myself included. And people would like to stay in the town, but they don't necessarily want to stay in the houses they're in. That being said, and therefore I would support this project and I support this developer and it's an excellent use of the site and probably better than what we'd see in a conventional subdivision or continued use as a hospital and certainly as a 40B if that ever reared its head again. We're in a safe harbor now, but we may not be forever. That being said, it's probably not revenue neutral. It's probably not schoolchildren neutral. These kinds of sites seldom are. They're always touted that way, but they seldom are even when they're 55-plus. The people who move into these homes, and hopefully they're primarily Western residents and we'd like to see some preference for them, could certainly, we have a need. Then their homes are bought by young families and those families send kids to the school and we still get impacts on our tax base. It's hard to know whether those are positive or negative, but they're seldom even. And my experience is even in summer communities where summer homes are built, results in impacts in the schools. We have to look at that. I don't think it's a huge issue, but we shouldn't be blind to it. That being said, pending review of what the traffic impacts are and what kind of mitigation can be done on the Clapboard Tree corridor and the intersection there. I think it's an excellent project. I do think you should look at, if I may, it is pretty dense. It's not as dense as it could be, but it's very dense. I'm not sure how exactly it is. Thank you. I've walked the site. These areas here and here and over here are pretty much climax gallery, second growth forest. They're not scrubbed. There's a lot of big trees. It's very good habitat. It's good groundwater recharge area. And they're going to lose a lot of that. If these become A and Rs, and this is fairly densely developed and this is grassland, we're losing a lot of habitat here. I think if you permit this number of A and Rs, and I'd like to see slightly lower density. I think this density is pretty reasonable, but this is not a lot of continuous open space if these areas are lost as open space and as natural habitat. So if you permit this number of A and Rs, and I'd like to see it lower, but I understand the comments. I think you should require building envelopes so that a lot of it stays open and maybe de-restrictions or conservation restrictions to preserve as much of those sets as possible. I think you should have shared driveways for sure, reduce some of the curb cuts and other traffic impacts. This party backs up here and here in the morning and here in the evening. Certainly--
Could you get closer to the microphone? I think we're starting to lose--
Certainly, these lots should enter onto the driveway system if possible. Maybe these can be reconfigured so both of these lots have access here. There could be a shared driveway here. You know, maybe three A and Rs even would preserve a lot of this site. I think that's important. I think you should look at it. One doesn't like to make a otherwise exemplary project, and I think this really is pretty well-thought-through, economically non-viable. On the other hand, we do want to preserve open space. We want to preserve natural habitat. This site has a lot of it. And if it's developed to this density, it's going to lose a lot of that. I would urge you to look at stormwater recharge using natural swales and rain gardens as much as possible rather than storm scepters and direct groundwater recharge. Those need maintenance. You don't know where it's going to be. I would not object as a resident to this becoming a town road if the applicant wanted to petition that, although the board may feel differently because I think it would be maintained to a different standard perhaps. But either way, there's got to be some allowance for where you're going to put the snow once you plow it. I don't see anything on this plan that allows for that. You don't want to probably with your traffic impacts on snow, you get oil, you get gravel, you get other things from cars. You don't want to put that in the soccer field. You don't want to put that in the green belt. You've got to make some kind of allowance for snow removal or snow storage. Those are preliminary comments. I know this is a very early stage and I appreciate the chance to present to you. Again, I would support this project, but I think you've got to evaluate it and require the technical expertise to do that on some areas that are fairly critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others in the audience? Thank you. Oh, Abby, did you want to respond on some of those, the technical points?
Right. The planning board's practice is at the next stage, when you receive a special permit application, you do hire a professional peer reviewer. When you get that application in, generally, we go out and ask for consultants. And then you'll select a professional to review the full documents, traffic engineering, drainage, all that at the next level.
Thanks.
Members of the committee, thank you. For the record, Scott Arnon, new member of the Chase Estates community, actually, only about five or six months. And I live on Colby Way. Two things that I'd like you to be aware of as you think about this project. The first came up at the December 3 meeting and I think it was a little too preliminary for Mr. Green to comment on at the time was there is a fence that has been residing around the Westwood Lodge property, not on the property line, but had been set back. Now that fence is 20-plus odd years old, but is very much a part now of every member's property who abuts this land. It's, I think it's set back probably 20 to 30 feet. I think it largely lines up with the gray line in the middle of that dark gray, excuse me, dark green area. The fence is either in probably need of repair or replacement. And so as a member of someone abutting that, the question is repair and place in kind at its current location or do they want to move that fence or remove it? And so for the people who own property on that line, that's, would have massive impact both on the visibility of the project as well as, you know, the space in our backyard. So just would want to have clarity as to what the plan is for that fence. The other part is the green line, the green space looks, you know, reasonably okay here. However, most of this is actually to the, some of the comments that I've made already, very large, thin trees, not necessarily shrubbery. So when there are no leaves, as there are now, these houses would be dramatically on top of one another. And so I've also walked the property a little bit and just from kind of our own backyards, this whole area in here, it's not a lot of area. Those houses, especially in the wintertime, will feel very much on top of one another and there will be very little privacy between the homes, especially on Colby and Sherman's Way, and the existing or the developed property. Just comments that I hope you would take in mind as you move forward with this.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Yes.
Hello. Hi, I'm David Worshay. I live at 18 Colby. I'm the president of the Chase Estates Homeowners Association. Been in that role for over 12 years and I'm also the first resident of Chase Estates back in 1995. And I've taken a very close look at the Green Company, what they've done. Like for instance, they mentioned the Dudley Brook Preserve. I was out there taking a look, really a high-quality property. I even went to see their community, the lanterns in Warren Woods in Ashland. Also, no smaller, no smaller units, but definitely of the highest quality. And I've checked references in the architectural community and legal community. Only the finest of things have been said about their reputation on there. And I think overall that this type of project is really by far and the way the best use of the property. Because again, I don't want to see another psychiatric facility. Over the years, it's been nothing but problems, a drain on police resources, other fire resources, et cetera. No sense in risking a 40B project after 2020 in a subdivision of just, you know, luxury houses. I don't think that's the best use of the land. So this to me is by far and the way the best thing for the abutters and preserving the abutting home values out there. So I'm fully behind this all the way.
Thank you. Are there, Mr. Olunoff, would you like to--
Steve Olunoff, 52 Glan Door Road. I'm an associate member of the planning board and past member of the planning board. They're presenting this as a project. Actually, it's two projects. There's an open space residential project here and then there's a, what they call an A and R, approval not required project here. So you're really not looking at one project, you're looking at two projects. What they're doing here is trying to subvert the whole OSRD project. The purpose is open space. And they're taking what they want, which is the properties along the street, and they're taking them out of the OSRD process and handling them separately, which means we have these big, huge lots in contrast to the open space. The whole purpose of open space residential development is to cluster everything together and to preserve open space, to maximize the amount of open space here. So they're not doing that because they're leaving those lots. There's all, the zoning here is one acre. So all those lots you see there, one, two, three, four, five, six, are all one acre and way larger than anything that we need. The last thing we need in this town is more McMansions. And that's exactly what these lots would be. These would be big lots with big houses in contrast-- I can, this is.
It's a smaller one than that's one.
Okay. Right. So I'm talking about the backyards here, all that is, if they didn't have the, if they went on the, put the whole project under an OSRD, then you wouldn't have that one acre requirement. You can have smaller lots. So the, we could, yeah. Okay. So. So like all this area, which is pretty good treat area, you know, Peter Fenders was mentioning, we need to preserve this. That could be done because it should be additional open space. Here we have more real treat area, which could be open space if they did that. So, so if we made this project truly an OSRD, open space residential development, those lots can be any size that the planning board will allow. So we can get them down to half acre, which is more than enough for property. We could perhaps even get some limitations on the size of them so we don't have these big, big mansions and we have a project that would be beneficial. The reason they can get away with this and, and you know, I don't know, it's probably illegal just to take a project and divide it into two projects. It's not done in a lot of areas where you have something this, if it came before in the state environment, the process, they would say, you can't do that. You're dividing your project into two to escape some of the regulations. That's exactly what's happening here. They're getting away with various regulations because in this state we have this A and R, approved or not required process, where if you have enough frontage and acreage along a street, all you have to do is go and subdivide it and the planning board has absolutely no control over that. So we have, at this point, we have no control over this. As an editorial thing, I'd just like to say that every year we've been trying to get zoning reform in this state. Massachusetts is the only state in the whole country that allows this kind of A and R development where you can subdivide something on a street and the town has no control over it whatsoever. With zoning reform, it would go through at least a minor subdivision process where the planning board and the town would have some control over what happens here. So that's a matter where you ought to, every year it gets a little bit further at the State House, but not enough. And I'll speak to your state rep, your state senator about this because we need that kind of zoning reform so we wouldn't have to come up with this kind of thing. So moving on.
Steve, did you have other specific items about this to address there? Okay. I just want to be mindful of, are there other people who are waiting to speak? If you could just raise your hands just to get a sense of.
Yeah, I have a few other things. Moving on to sidewalks, so we, we need five-foot sidewalks. The town now has decided we need concrete sidewalks. Asphalt sidewalks don't work, so they should be five-foot concrete sidewalks. It's required on both sides and the subdivision rules and regulations now require that if you don't, if you want a waiver from the sidewalk on one side, then you should just come up with a equivalent payment to pay for sidewalks elsewhere. We don't have to do that here. We can just put in a sidewalk, again, going from Colby Street all the way up here. You need that sidewalk, you need it on that side. You can't expect especially seniors having to cross over to a sidewalk on the other side of the street. And with that, then you would have, if people want to go for a walk, they can walk around the sidewalk and totally around. It would connect to the other properties and so I did speak to DPW director and he said, yes, this should be sidewalks along the street, five-foot wide concrete sidewalks, the whole distance. They are redoing that intersection shortly, so they just have to coordinate it with that. So maybe you get some of the sidewalks from the town as part of that project or maybe contribute in some way, but you need to work that out.
Mr. Olunoff, I'm sorry, but since you're also an associate member of this board, I will invite you to participate throughout the process as we go into all the details, but I would like to get to some of the other people who are wanting to speak tonight.
I'll go a little bit faster. There's a complete street policy in this town. I think the developers should look at our complete streets policy and get these sidewalks better lined up. I noticed you did ask for a waiver for meandering sidewalks. That should be a requirement from the planning board that they be meandering. Some of these sidewalks ridiculously, ridiculous the way they go around, the parking lots making sharp 90-degree turns left and right, left and right. You should have nice straight paths where the people want to go. Now on the affordable housing, we didn't talk enough about the affordable housing, the Sarah, the housing administrator, are you going to talk about that?
We're going to go over that after we get the rest of the public comment also because I know Sarah had presented a memo with a number of options. So I would like to ask, if people could line up over here and I'm sorry, Steve.
I will, my further comments have to do mostly with how we can achieve better affordable housing on this project, so I'll talk about that later when we talk about that.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Hi, I'm Maureen Sullivan-Trainer and I'm over here at 66 Winter Street. Were about 20 years and a Westwood resident for 30. So I do like the idea of the proposal that you've come up with. I have seen Pine Hills and been down there quite frequently. I like what has been developed there, we'll check out the rest of it. As an abutter to that driveway right there, I have significant concerns. I'm looking at the amount of traffic and that's certainly something I know we addressed earlier, but I really do have a significant concern because I don't want to see a streetlight there. I do like the idea of adding a third drive in there. The other thing I want to support that I've heard discussed tonight is, and I appreciate this from the other abutters as well, when you see, look at that particular piece of land today, which is pre-winter, you can see very deeply into it. And with the lodge there, we could see the lodge at times and that would have been way deeper than the properties that you're proposing. So I would really like you to look into how you're going to frame it and really, I don't want to say hide, but I don't have the training in that area, but I would like to see much more landscaping in consideration so that it does not look like a very thickly developed community. And that it, one of the things that this particular area does bring, and I appreciate the McMansion topics as well, is it still is a very country environment and a very soft environment without heavy traffic, believe it or not. And so I know that you do have it up there, Clapwood Tree Street, heavy traffic, but we don't as much on Winter Street. So I want to protect some of that small-town community feeling so that when we do go out and walk and take the bikes and have everyone around, it has a gentle feel of being a part of Westwood community with the open greens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suda Sirma, 9 Phillips Ricks Road down the street. As opposed to some people, I'm not an abutter to this, but I do care what's happening in town of Westwood. I, we've been getting into the specifics of what's happening with this proposal, but I would ask the planning board if we step back and if somebody could speak to, you know, from the developer team, it looks fabulous, the homes, you know, I'll consider moving there at one point, but the market feasibility study for this, we also have developments in Islington, University Station, that was marketed to empty nesters, all these developments around town. So I'm curious of how that fits into our overall town plan and curious of like what the sort of market, market study was done by the developer. Secondly, I'd ask to clarify as far as off-site, what this means for affordable housing and then also really request the planning board to consider that, that this does impact the school system. Many of us moved here for the school system and any impact in the housing developments, additional housing, you know, I think this affects the integrity of the school system and I see one school committee member here, I'm not sure of what dialogue happens with the superintendent of the school committee when these developments are going on and not a reporting to, but a feedback loop. And so I respectfully disagree when somebody says there's no school age children. It does have an impact to the school.
Thank you. Did, as a developer, if you had anything to report in terms of the market study, I mean, can you address that or do you want to, David?
Can I address all the comments or someone?
If, yeah, if you can briefly, if there are things come up that are questions that you can answer right away, I think that's helpful to.
So going back to a couple of the questions that came up, as far as the market study, I think you were comparing us to Westwood Station and there was one other community, but my, my understanding is those are all mid-rise buildings, they're not townhomes and that there's only Reynolds Farm and we're building something very different from Reynolds Farm. That was master bedroom up, it was only a one-car garage. We're doing master bedrooms on the first floor. The limitation of what we would face for a two-bedroom home is very different from what I believe some of these other places are or the other, the others are apartments, which tend to get more school-age kids coming in temporarily while they're, while they're school age. So I feel that it's, it's very different. There is no other place around here for empty nesters along 128 and that's what we're really trying to address, that need. We would love to give preference to Westwood people in the ways that we're allowed to do that. That would be much nicer. I can imagine a lot of people from the surrounding neighborhood wanting to stay in town and that's our goal. Our past experience at Pine Hills, we've built almost 1,000 homes there and we have fewer than 10 children that have been there in all of that time for the past 19 years. So we have a track record and it's really by design, having master bedroom down and no more than two bedrooms on any floor.
Can I, can I ask a question related to that? We've had other projects come before the board in the past and a number of times, as you know, Reynolds Farm is the only one that is existing currently, but one of the topics that's come up was the secondary market. The first, selling this first, I get, but those, those first-time owners then want to sell.
Right.
That market, that secondary market has been an issue where the developers really hadn't had a whole lot of experience in that and the conjecture was they may sit for a long time, empty. And there was a concern about how that moves, you know, the, forward with the development and starts looking tired and it's empty. So I don't know what, you know, can you speak to that, how you sell these on the second, you know, for the second time, third time?
Sure. No, that's a great question. We don't get asked that a lot, but we like to manage our own condominium communities and these would be condominiums. So we run the association, the neighbors don't take control until the last home sells. We create an advisory board about a third of the way through so that we can teach the residents how to self-manage and how to run the association. But the reason, and we tend to stay on usually five to 10 years after we've sold, sold out a community, we're still managing the association. And for us, it's twofold. One, it's marketing because we want to make sure this community looks good and it's also educating people how to maintain it. We make sure we have plenty of reserves. We want to maintain it and maintain people's value because this is their largest investment, particularly when you're in the 55-plus market, that we want to preserve that for people. And so I'd ask you to go to any community that we've built and take a look and I don't think you'll have the concern or the same concern about it being run down or how it's maintained. In fact, the price appreciation in these communities that we sell is commensurate or, I'll call it commensurate, I think it might even be a little bit higher than what a standard single-family home does. And we take a lot of pride in that.
Do you have a price point in mind?
What's that?
Do you have a price point in mind?
Well, it all depends.
I won't hold you to it.
Yeah, no. Is it all cash? No. It, we're going to be pricing it, it depends on all the things we need to do for the town and you've heard about sidewalks and complete streets and programs like that. We're well aware that we'll be needing to do some of that. So that goes into the equation. It's what the market is at the time of selling. If it went 100% smoothly, we would be permitted this spring, we would start work this summer and we would begin selling in the winter. If that's, if all the stars align, I've never seen that happen yet, but if it did that, that's the timeframe and I see the price point being in the 800s to 900s, under, definitely under a million and that would be the area.
Thank you.
Can I do two other things? There is a full traffic study. I apologize, I'll be brief. There is a full traffic study that we need to do for the final, so all, for the final plan and the final review. So all of these concerns that people have brought up will be addressed in that. We want to talk with the neighbors about the landscaping. A lot of people brought up that there is no understory and as much as you don't want to look in when we're selling new homes, people want privacy in both directions. So we're aligned there and we'll be talking with the neighbors individually to figure out what works best in each case. Last thing, Mr. Olunoff talked about this being two projects and I feel very badly that you felt we were trying to do something, a fast one or whatever. That was the whole reason why we showed the A and R lots and we've not tried to hide it. We want the OSRD to have the benefits of the OSRD, but actually having the lots along the street makes it feel much more like the current neighborhood. And we thought, particularly in talking with the planning department, that 40 homes was a good number, that going up to 60 homes in an OSRD wouldn't be as palatable to the neighborhood. So that's really what we were trying to achieve. And then there is room for snow and we'll be addressing all those concerns and I love the idea of the meandering sidewalk. In fact, we haven't built a sidewalk in one of our communities in, I'm not sure, 30 years, 40 years. We'd rather donate the cost of that to the complete streets program and let people walk in the street like they're going to do anyways, but that's something that the planning board would have to decide. We're not trying to save cost on that, we're just trying to make it look nice.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullen.
Tony Mullen, 126 Pond Street. Thank you, Chairman Atkins. I'm going to give a statement on behalf of the Westwood Youth Soccer, which I'm a member of the board, in support of this development. And so I'm here on behalf of the board, I'm a member of the board and I'd like to express our support for the special permit under the open space residential development, which would enable the soccer field currently at the lodge property to continue to be used by the children of Westwood. As context, during the recent fall season, 1,244 children of Westwood played soccer, which is 57% of the K-9 population, a rate that is double neighboring towns. Westwood's youth soccer mission to promote and enhance the game of soccer for youth of Westwood and maintain our philosophy where every child has an opportunity to play. We do not cut players. Would not be possible without all the fields we have. We only serve the community this way because of the fields and our partnership with Nicole Banks and her team and Todd Corson and his team at the DPW. As context, just some more numbers. This is a critical part of our overall ability to have all the children play soccer. For example, in the spring season, approximately 15 practices will be held at the lodge field this spring. We'll have four to five games on weekends, plus on Sundays typically the field is used by adult members of the community. Our only request today is that as part of the conditions of the special permit is that we ask that the soccer field and the associated parking be put in place first before the housing because if we were actually, we lose the field for a few years, we may not be able to accommodate all the soccer, demand for soccer. So we'd ask that that actually, the field be put in place as well as the parking. This will enable us to have no disruption to using this critical field. Thank you for listening today.
Thank you.
Kevin Becker, 1227 High Street. I'm not an abutter, but like that woman said, I'm an interested party because I'm a resident. I've advocated over the years, 26 years I've lived in Westwood, I've advocated for and against various housing projects, including age-restricted housing projects. I live very close to Highland Glen, so I'm pretty much aware of the kind of issues that people have raised. The one that concerns me most from what I heard tonight were the site distances. There is planning board precedent for rejecting proposals similar to this where a single site distance was not met by about 20 feet. Not, not one of the four site distances required on this is anywhere near 600 feet. So those are in place. I've advocated over the years, 26 years I've lived in Westwood, I've advocated for and against various housing projects, including age-restricted housing projects. I live very close to Highland Glen, so I'm pretty much aware of the kind of issues that people have raised. The one that concerns me most from what I heard tonight were the site distances. There is planning board precedent for rejecting proposals similar to this where a single site distance was not met by about 20 feet. Not, not one of the four site distances required on this is anywhere near 600 feet. So those are in place as safety matters. It's not about existing crash data and it's not about traffic issues because we don't know what the traffic is going to be, the traffic is going to change, the crash data will not be relevant because there's a hospital there now and it hasn't been operational for a while. So that crash data is not going to show anything. So I think that it's really about getting a very good assessment about the safety with the site distances. One of them I think was 165 feet and it's supposed to be 600. That's, you know, you're talking about putting people who are senior citizens in there and shortening the site distances. I think that's a real safety issue and that's my, my main concern about, about what I've heard tonight. I think the other thing that we, I would ask the planning board to think about is the, you know, there's been talk about affordable housing and I know you're going to get into it. I, I think that if this goes forward, they're asking for a tremendous number of waivers and really significant waivers and that we should have more than 15% affordable match. And I would like to see it onsite. One of the things that I think Westwood has needed for a very long time and still continues to need is affordable housing for seniors. We get, we have gotten a number of affordable housing projects, but $800, $900,000, you don't sell your $300,000 house and move into an $800,000 house in your retirement. So, so this really, I understand your goal is to have Westwood residents, I heard you say that, I appreciate that, but I don't see how this will do that. And if you take whatever affordable housing comes with it and kind of move it off-site, you're almost by default taking it away from seniors. If you're going to make affordable housing for seniors, then keep it here onsite. But I would also like to see more than, more than six. I'd like to see, I don't know why we don't require 25%. At 15, we're just always a little bit behind. So those are my, my main concerns and I'd like you to consider those. And thank you for telling us about the price because I think that really is, it's a really important issue for people to think about is really who is this going to serve? Will it really serve Westwood residents and how affordable is it going to be? Thanks.
Thank you. Is another comment there?
I'm Matthew Watzke. I'm a resident here in Westwood since 1985. Our home is at 65 Mayfair Drive. I'm speaking tonight really on my, on my own behalf, but I'm a former member of the, excuse me, former president of the Temple Beth David, still a member, a longtime member of it and still very much involved. Wanted to make a couple of observations. Let's see if I can push the right button. There we go. So as it stands right now, there's a fence along this line here and the temple's parking has head-in parking all along this line. So I think it will be very important for this fence, which is starting to show its age, to be maintained as a condition of this permit because at a minimum, whoever ends up buying this property and building a house there would not be happy every time we have a service and have the lights pointing in at night from our head-in parking. Also as a comment, the members of the planning board will probably recognize this, over right about here is the end of the cul-de-sac for, for here. And at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a sidewalk that connects through to Pond Street. I think the temple would be, let's say receptive to the idea of maintaining or enhancing the connectivity of open spaces in town. And so if the green space were to have an easement that connected up to here and there's a fence line right between the temple parking lot and this house, there's a fence right here. If it could find a way to fit a pathway in here, that would create the connectivity to the path that would go to Pond Street. I haven't had an opportunity to present it to the temple board, it's my own thoughts, but it's something to consider and I encourage the, the developer to reach out to me and if it's something he's interested in and the board's interested in, I could take it to the temple board and see what we do. That's my thoughts for tonight. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Are there, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Then I would see if there are board members who would have additional questions or comments. I can just to reiterate, we have some initial determinations to make and then recommendations. And so what I was thinking is if we, we could discuss the initial findings and then we could open up for more of a deeper discussion about the affordability and those kinds of things. I think the initial, there were three things, right, Abby, that, for this?
Right. There are a couple of different points of discussion you should review. Actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I, there's been some discussion about those A&R lots. What you are reviewing as part of this project is the, as a special permit, is the open space residential development. So their request for the age-restricted housing, they are asking for a density increase. So that is under your purview as a special permit. The applicant has not chosen to use the full site, so they have shown these A&R lots pulled out. So you have limited authority under, as presented, the A&R lots. If an applicant submits a plan that meets the frontage requirements, they don't need any kind of special review from you on that. So I just wanted to point that out. I know someone mentioned setbacks. So those lots would be single-family lots and they would be subject to the dimensional controls and the zoning bylaw for the single residency zoning district, which is the zone that it's in. And then areas of discussion points for tonight, you know, all, all the waivers. There is one waiver that's before you for this application, that's showing the size of the trees at the 24 inches rather than the 10 inches. That's for tonight's hearing. And then for discussion though, these other waivers will help give guidance to the applicant as they develop the special permit plans. And the ones I think you should focus on is the affordability requirement, the community facilities, the meeting space. That's, the zoning bylaw is left a little bit open-ended to be determined by the planning board if it meets the community's social and recreational needs of the residents. And then preservation of the soccer fields. That is a waiver because it's, it's not in a, it's not today in its natural state, but you could review it as, as proposed as the fields.
All right. Who wants to, who wants to go first? Why don't we talk about, let's go, well, first of all, so the tree, is anyone concerned about the 10-inch versus two-foot tree caliper issue? Okay.
I'm okay with that.
And then the, in terms of the density, the calculations, I mean, we've verified those calculations, it's just, it's a step-by-step calculation. I mean, 40 is less than the 68, right? So technically.
Right. Yep, it was 68. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that reminded me that I should have mentioned during the A&R, the applicant did submit a proof plan to you that was in your packet that was showing, that was intended to serve as showing what the applicant can do by right. And that's 11 of the A&R lots. So without any special approval from you, they could develop the property overall as 11 house lots, but they would like to do this proposal and sorry to jump back to that.
Without this, there's enough frontage to create 11 lots that are big enough to fit the dimensional requirements. So you could have, if all this goes away, it's, it could be 11 lots.
Are they required to submit a subdivision proof plan?
So know that, well, with, if there's adequate frontage, then it's an approval, not required, it's not a subdivision.
Do they need to do an A&R plan? Are they required also to show you a subdivision proof plan, what can be done under conventional building?
Yes. I mean, the special permit does refer to the subdivision rules and regulations so that what is what the waivers that the planning board is looking at, but the proof plan that they submitted is essentially saying it's not a subdivision under the subdivision control law.
They're asking you if they're under OSRD, don't they have to show you also a subdivision proof plan?
You gotta go to the microphone.
We need to get a microphone.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking if they also need to do a subdivision proof plan as well as an A&R proof plan.
Talking loud is not a microphone.
Do you want me to say anything?
So.
Yes, please. No one is hearing you on the recording.
I'm sorry. What I'm asking is, I know that they've submitted an A&R proof plan showing 11 lots as of right. Are they also required to submit to you for your evaluation a proof plan of what they could do under a conventional subdivision scheme, showing I would assume here about 20 lots?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Right? No. So the answer is no. So I think on those issues, we have enough, we have enough information there to make a motion in terms of whether it can proceed, but we should probably now move to a discussion of the recommendations of things. So.
With the waivers.
The wa, want to go through the waivers?
Let's go through the waivers. All right. Just as a stat. Just a stat. Wave of two, basically the sight lines coming back from the intersection, we're looking for 600 feet. And as we speak now, we're sitting at 220 feet and 410 feet, well below the minimum sight distance. Wave of three, we need a radius of 100, a centerline radius of 150 feet. They're asking for 50, two-thirds below the minimum. And wave of six, four-foot sidewalk, whereas we require a five-foot sidewalk so two people can walk comfortably side by side. Do you need?
Don't all speak, or did you want to respond?
Just for, just for a point of clarification, it's not sight lines, it's distance between intersections. So a sight line is a different thing that we would need to comply by and we have plenty of room to do that from the initial studies we've done and we'll prove that in our traffic study as well.
You are correct about that on wave of two.
Okay. And I had two other things, just as people were talking about that these are A&R lots. We actually like the idea of the driveways onto us and some of the common drives and we would like to treat it as, Mr. Olunoff, a version of what he said by putting some restrictions so we preserve open space on the back halves of those lots and limit warehouses could be built. It's very early stages so we don't, as we do our final plan, we would even consider some of those restrictions on the front of the lots so that it keeps a tree buffer. And we'd be willing to work with the town on that. I think that would really help it feel more private and not create those open views that people are concerned about. We want those too.
Please identify yourself and.
Diane Hayes, 84 Magnolia Drive. I just had a question where, were all the calculations for density based on all the lots or just the dark green lots?
Dark green, the.
Okay. So they're just trying to merge those lots together and then separate out the other ones. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry. Turn on. I think the bed is good. Here, you want to?
This is a really good mic.
No, I forgot my question. What was my question? I'm sorry. It'll come back to me. It'll come back.
I have a question about the affordability requirement. So did you get a copy of the memo from our housing agent that recommended, had a bunch of different options out there? And I wondered if you had evaluated option one in particular, which involved having some affordable housing in the, in, as these units and then using one of the A&R lots to have an additional affordable component?
This all happened very recently, just in the last couple of days, so I don't have it all committed to memory, but there were four options that were presented in the memo and you're saying, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. I know that in the four options, we can work within those or some combination of the four. If you ask me specifically again what option one is, I can address that directly.
Well, actually, I think in terms of providing guidance, I know that our interest, we want to promote more affordable housing and I think that I'm, I'm in agreement with a lot of what I heard here in terms of more, more affordable options and having it in the development as opposed to somewhere completely off-site.
Right. There's a technical differentiation that's happening here as well. If it's not in the OSRD, that parcel, the 14-acre parcel, it's considered off-site, but we're looking at doing something on one of the lots. So it's technically in the neighborhood, but legally it's off-site. So I think that that's our goal to have some with, we would love to have some within the OSRD and some adjacent. Does that, does that address the question of the way you were asking?
Yeah, I think that's, I think as we, as we go through this, we'll, we'll cover it more and more, but I mean, I would like to see a lot more in terms, this is an opportunity, this large space in town. We've just had a housing kind of strategy session. We talked about there's few places in town where you can have the opportunity to develop any sort of affordable housing. So I'd hate to just barely get by with the bare minimum here. So anything we can do creatively to improve that is, we would like.
Actually, talking about this reminded me, my question was, developing one of these lots that are part of the A&R lots into affordable housing doesn't help us as much as you may think because it's adding new housing and it's adding affordable. So it changes our numerator and our denominator. So it doesn't help us as much as converting an existing home in town to an affordable home. That helps us in our housing stock a lot better. So while I understand what your, what your goal is, I think onsite, this board would think the town would be better served if some of the newer homes here because of the density. If, if we're going to build new homes, I'd rather it be, my knee-jerk reaction is I'd rather it be part of this development, the OSRD, instead of putting one on that new lot. Or I don't know if you can find enough houses for sale to make it worth your while in town to convert to affordable housing, but building new homes off-site and saying it's affordable doesn't help as much as you may think from our overall housing stock for affordable. So that's what I was thinking.
So actually, actually, I can kind of, I can summarize the option one in the memo. The idea was to construct three onsite affordable units and then to construct an additional unit on one of the A&R lots, which would be four units. So this is donate one of the A&R parcels to a Department of Developmental Services partner who develops single-family residence for people with disabilities. The property would be required to be restricted as affordable in perpetuity and qualified on the subsidized housing inventory for a minimum of four units. And then the three units onsite. So that way you get seven units. It's one A&R lot, it's one structure, but it, it's another, it's another way to get something additional out of this.
On a personal level, I like that option the best. And on a business level, I think that could work. So if that's really where the town wants us to go, we're happy to do that.
Is Sarah here? Sarah Bouchard, or would you want to speak to that? I didn't, I know you were here earlier and then I didn't see you, so I would have let you describe it, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Sarah Bouchard, I'm the town's housing and zoning agent. And if you don't mind, I can take a moment to kind of summarize the memo that I provided to the board, both for everybody here in attendance to have an understanding of just my explanations and then also to perhaps give the board an opportunity to ask some questions about this area. So just to go over the requirements in the zoning bylaw. So currently, a housing proposal under the OSRD section of the bylaw requires that 15% of the total units that are constructed be deed-restricted as affordable. And that means available to households that are income-eligible, earning at or below 80% of the area median income. So the bylaw allows the planning board. So the bylaw allows the planning board to grant the default option, which is to construct all of that 15% onsite with, integrated within the rest of the market units, so in this proposal, what that would look like is an even distribution of six units within those town homes, kind of evenly spread down the street, on both sides of the street, in every kind of configuration of floor plan that Mr. Green is offering. The zoning bylaw does offer the planning board the ability to also consider some version of affordability requirements that it finds are at least equivalent to the housing needs of the community. What that isn't, is really giving the planning board the ability to say, forget about affordability, which is not what the developer is asking for here, but it allows the planning board to be able to accept some sort of an affordability arrangement that it thinks might meet the needs at least as well as constructing them onsite, and that's relevant, I think, in a proposal like this one, because affordable housing can take all different forms, it can look like rental, it can look like ownership, it can be age-restricted, it can be family, it can be multifamily, it could be a duplex, it could be single-family, right, so it can take a lot of forms, and when we look at our housing portfolio on the affordable side as a whole, really, one of our goals is to offer a variety of housing types that meet the needs, the affordable needs, of a variety of families and households and individuals in the town. So right now, we don't have any age-restricted ownership units, so that's definitely a check mark in that column for including them onsite. Another pro of offering them onsite is being able to achieve that kind of desegregation of affordable housing, and being able to construct affordable units integrated in with market communities all over town, so that they're not solely located in areas where the housing costs are a little bit less expensive, and I think when you're talking about such a tight market in Westwood, if you were looking to purchase parcels off-site, you might run into that issue, but that's not to say that building them onsite is a gold standard either, there's some things to consider about that. Age-restricting ownership units can be challenging, because there is a more limited market for them, so not only are you talking about the limited income market for an ownership unit, which right now, for a family of two, you wouldn't be able to earn more than $65,000 a year, but of course, you'd still have to be able to make your mortgage payments and afford the condo fees and all of that, so that would look probably, depending on the finals for cost, they'd have to earn somewhere around $45,000 to $50,000 a year, so that's a fairly narrow margin, you could argue that that would be a fairly tight market. There's also an asset cap for purchasing affordable ownership units, so that's something that further restricts the pool of available buyers. One thing that we don't want to do is offer or require some sort of an affordability requirement and not be able to sell these units, right? So I think the town's interest is really, and the planning board's interest, should be to balance these kind of competing arguments and arrive at a recommendation that really best fits the needs of the community. So in my memo, I went through those, those requirements and kind of explained those considerations. An additional consideration for age-restricting units is that DHCD, that's the State Department of Housing and Community Development, when it's approving age restrictions for affordable units, it does require an additional level of review, DHCD tends to favor family affordable units, or that is, units available to the widest possible pool of households, so that's not to say it doesn't approve age-restricted ownership units, but it would require the town and the developer to submit a market study showing that there's a need for it in the community, so if the planning board decides to recommend or approve an affordability requirement that includes any onsite units, I would recommend that that market study be provided sooner in the process rather than later, so we can establish that need. My recommendations were kind of centered on some of the preliminary data points that the chairman had referenced, the Housing Partnership is currently drafting a housing production plan, a needs assessment is underway to be able to gather research and data on what those housing needs are in Westwood, we held some community engagement sessions and did a survey, and it's still in the works, so I don't have a document to give you, but some of the preliminary data points that have come in have showed a strong need for senior housing, both in the public's desire for that housing, and then also the demographics show that that is a significant need. What I can also tell you, and I mentioned it before, our affordable portfolio does not currently have any age-restricted affordable ownership units, so that's something to consider. I have been in touch with a variety of lottery agents and people in the industry to kind of get a sense about what the market currently looks like for age-restricted ownership units, and I'm told that the, the market seems to be fairly strong in our area, it is heavily dependent on the geography of the town where those units are located, and since we don't have any comps in Westwood, I can't say for certainty that those units would sell, but I have a number of comparable developments that I've looked at that are currently holding lotteries in adjacent communities or similar communities that have not had difficulty selling. So given all of that, my recommendations really centered on a combination, working with the developer here to construct some mix of onsite units, but perhaps not all of them being onsite units, and one option that was tentatively proposed, and again, this is a preliminary review, but the town has been working with one of our current Department of Developmental Services providers to locate a parcel for a group home for people with developmental disabilities, and we had thought if there was an option to work with one of these A&R lots on the side, to construct one of those residences, that would be a creative way to meet a need that currently exists in our community, and we know from our work with the Disability Commission, and also through the needs assessment that has been done through the housing production plan, that supportive housing for residents is in need in this community, so that would be an interesting approach, because with units that are funded from the Department of Developmental Services, you can count each bedroom as a unit for your SHI calculation, so when you're focusing on the SHI math, that is a helpful tool for being able to get to that 10% affordability requirement, or exceed it, which is our goal, and then being able to include some combination of onsite housing with that. A couple of the other points that I heard earlier that I just wanted to briefly address while I have the microphone, is Westwood preferences, we do have the ability to request that DHCD approve a Westwood preference in lotteries for affordable units, it can be, can be done, we can, we can ask. I loved the comment earlier about why not 25%, I think I'm probably the best qualified person in this town to be able to say, I love housing, let's do as much affordable housing as possible. The 15% requirement is really designed to be able to get us a little bit ahead on that 10% SHI calculation, not all housing has that inclusionary zoning requirement, the open space residential development does, because it's available by special permit, but at a certain point, when you start creeping higher and higher in those percentages, you run the risk of making a project uneconomic and suppressing some of the interest in the market for that development, or on the flip side, artificially raising the market costs of the other units, which doesn't impact our SHI, but in general, doesn't serve to meet our affordability goals, so the 15% is definitely a number that we support, and I would not, of course, recommend that the planning board approve an amount that's less than six units in this proposal, but I like the combination of some mix of on- and off-site housing, and I'd be happy to answer, any more questions that anybody has?
Thank you, any?
So I also like option one, I think it's a great, it's a great, for the affordable housing, it's a benefit to the town, we get that one extra unit, but I think we also need to consider onsite, reducing the condo fees for the affordable housing, if we could do that, to make it more affordable for them as well, I don't know what your affordable, what your condo fees are going to be?
With the condo fees, we're, we're learning more and more about the affordable housing, but they take that into account, it's based upon the person's income, how much they can pay, you don't want to make it zero, because then the other residents in the community feel like they're subsidizing or being slighted, so there's a happy balance that we would try to achieve, but they'll definitely not be the full fees.
Can you take a microphone and ask?
And just, just to piggyback on that, when the, the home sale prices are calculated and approved by DHCD, they have to factor in those condo fees into the total affordability, so the purchase price would be adjusted to accommodate that monthly payment including the condo fees.
I think that's the only way you can do it under Chapter 183A, it's got to be based on the percentage interest, which is the value of that unit to the condo as a whole at the time it's created, unless you come up with some other way to subsidize it that's not considered a reduction of the condo fee, I don't think you can do it under the condominium statute.
Thanks, I also like this option, because part of our challenge in town is that with the bridges, right, the, the beds that are being counted there as non-affordable units in town, so that was a, the recalculation of our, of the denominator has increased due to the way that those beds are being treated there, so here's an example on the other side of that, where it benefits us, or benefits, and it benefits, you say there's a need in the town for this, because there isn't anything else, right? So Brian?
Yeah, I was just thinking, should we go through each of the, each of the items to, to see where we get some consensus with regards to sidewalks and such?
Yeah, I think we, I think the theme of this is going to be that it's work with our staff, you know, to get, they're coming up with good options and things, and it's more than just, you know, meeting the, the numbers in the zoning bylaws, but there's an opportunity here to do something that benefits the community in a lot of different ways, so Brian, do you want to comment on?
Yeah, so it seems, do you want to go through the items, so for, for the tree calipers, does anybody else on the board have anything else to add with their desire to have these additional trees counted?
I think we're good.
If that, I'll make a motion to waive the preliminary submission requirement of Section 831, 8315-1, to show all existing trees over 10 inches in diameter, the board finds the plans dated December 5th, 2018, showing the trees 24 inches and greater is sufficient to consider this application, and much of the mature trees are beyond the OSRD project area.
Second, have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that's fast.
And then it looks like we've already covered the, the off-site pedestrian improvements to sidewalks, it sounded like the applicant was interested in, in moving in that direction. Abby, do we need anything else, any other commitment from the applicant at this point?
Yeah, I think, why don't we go back to the, on the affordability, is there anything else anyone wants to add on that? Mr. Olunoff, I, can I, can you do it in about three minutes?
So there are lots of things you can do here, I don't think you should tie yourself down to any one particular thing, again, here's just one example of what you could do, if you did the whole thing as an OSRD, and so that means instead of 40 units, now we have 46, you require an additional affordable unit, so for instance, you can move two of the units into, onto the lot six there, and then designate four of the units on the property as, as age-restricted, and have two slightly off the property right there on that lot as non-age-restricted, and then there's still room for a, a group home, which would give you additional, and then doing that, and if you don't have the OSRD restrictions, you can easily get another market lot, so I was not asking for the whole thing, when it's OSRD, to be all these 40 units, I wasn't asking for any more 40, I was just saying that the, the single resident market units could then be on smaller lots, which means you can get more of them on, you can get an extra unit, I'd be, I would be happy to say, okay, you can have, instead of six, you could have seven, you could have five and two, or you can have four and three, they would certainly fit if they were half, so, so we could get everything, we could get age-restricted, we can get non-age-restricted, and we get a group home, and you can get an additional market rate house on the lot, and everyone's happy, if everyone gets something. Any question to follow that?
Do we have any other, any other affordability comments? And I think is that, we're not going to, we're not going to vote, vote on something, but the general sense here, we, it seems like we all like option one. Community facilities, let's talk a little bit about, because I think, are we talking about a, is there an actual building there, or is this more like a covering that people would stand under?
You're back in the first phase of when we were talking with, beginning our discussions, and it was just a covered building, but now it's an actual meeting house, it's a heated structure, it has a kitchen, it has a big meeting area, has, I believe it has two bathrooms, storage area, and a big, and an area to pick up your mail, and we find that's the most socially active place, what develops is something called the four o'clock club, if you want to go meet your neighbors, you go grab your mail at four, and in the kitchen we'll have a coffee maker, like a Keurig machine or something like that, sit at some of the tables in the gathering space, and socialize with your neighbors, if you need to go in and out quickly, you can do that too, but this is a real building, and we have one in Ashland, if you want to see it, at the lanterns in Warren Woods, that one doesn't have a basement, so it's a little bit bigger, the structure would be smaller, because you can have storage in the basement.
And you find that people make use of that, because I know, I ask because we've had other presentations and they're, we do a different type of development, but they're, they said, oh, nobody needs that, or nobody, most people just entertain in their, in their yards or something, but.
Well, I think that was the Highland Meadows presentation, and that one was a much higher price point than we're looking at, we find that people use this space a lot, whether they have a holiday party, or really a lot of group activities, where it's playing cards, some other form of regular, book club, things like that, where people have a gathering space and they don't want to alternate homes, or they sometimes do it in the meeting house and sometimes do it in their homes, but having that space, it's an expensive feature, but it's a nice feature.
Okay, any, any other comments on the board about this, I think?
I'm okay with that, that is stated.
Okay, and then the other thing, just what Mr. Olunoff was proposing, as far as the affordables and the OSRD, I think it gets a little more confusing to have some be 55-plus and some not be in the OSRD, and I'm pretty sure that's not even allowed, I think they all have to be 55-plus, we'd like to accomplish what he's proposing, but do it through some restrictions on where homes can be built, and limit that area, like I said before, and to preserve tree buffers along the street and in the backyards.
I think you can work with our town planner, and I know that was a concern that I'm hearing about the, the buffer in particular, so come up with.
That would be great, we'd like to do that.
The open space standards, so this is, I think we need, we should address, like that's one of the waivers, was the soccer field is not really like a meadow, you know, it's a soccer field, so is that a waiver that we're comfortable with to preserve, to keep the soccer field?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Melon, could you just get your, on the microphone, thank you.
So I know there was some conversation about the parking, and that's still an open item, I guess two questions, one, will the field space be maintained so it can still accommodate 11v11 soccer, that's one, and then two is more on the timing, would we lose the field for any, you know, spring, fall season as part of this development?
So you've hit another topic near and dear to my heart, I have four kids, and I've coached all of them through soccer in Newton, I'm currently a soccer referee, and I get to ref with one of my daughters, it's really one of the more fun things I get to do, and so I'm all for this, I think we can work with the town to get the parking in in some format, it might not be fully paved right away without losing a season, when you look at our plan, I don't have it exact yet, because we're still getting the engineered drawings, but the soccer field is not in that parking lot, we've pushed the roadway over a little bit, so there's room for the parking and an 11v11 soccer field, it might not, I got to see exactly where it is, because it, I don't know the standards for how far from the parking you want the field, I imagine it's 15 or 20 feet, and we'll have to work, we can work with the soccer group about that to accomplish a plan.
Do you think the timing would, will work, I think was the?
I think that there'll be some disruption when we put in the roadway, and it all depends upon when we're approved, but we'll do our best to work with them, it certainly won't be harming the field, but the question is, how can we take care of parking in the interim while we're doing our roadway construction? in the interim while we're doing our roadway construction, which will take about two and a half, three months? So, the answer is, it seems like it's doable. And we would strive to make that part of it.
And I think our recommendation here, it sounds like we're all in agreement on the idea that we would, you know, we want to keep the soccer field, so.
Yeah, definitely. Nothing we're doing imposes upon the soccer field directly with tearing anything up. It'd just be creating that parking and keeping access.
Now, we should talk about the, sort of the pedestrian, and there's a couple of things that come up. So, we have the safety issues with the roads coming out of there. We have the possibility of connecting to other things. We have our, DPW had suggested some contribution to the sidewalk improvements over there. That intersection is being reconfigured, or it's being, it's part of a complete streets project that's already underway. So, Abby, do you have anything we can, do you need us to prioritize anything here? Or kind of how do you want to proceed with that?
At this stage, I think it's a little early to say on the timing. So, I think as the development moves on to special permit stage, that's something that we would review with the developer and public works on timing and scheduling and what's reasonable to be considered as part of the project. Also, with the timing related to the soccer fields, I think as a project moves along into the special permit stage, you'll have a better sense of timing. And you could review, you know, a projected construction schedule that you could have a condition as best you can to work on the timing for the least amount of disruption.
Are there other areas that we should provide guidance on?
One other one is the width of the sidewalk. It sounded like, I'm in favor of the five feet wide.
Yeah.
For essentially couples and to be able to walk together and such. Does anybody else have a different mindset?
Yeah, I think we're five, five feet is the standard, and that's what we've talked about for other projects in town.
And then along that same line, the width of the road and the, whether it's stone, stone or stone with concrete, that's the other item that we need to give guidance to tonight.
So, the requirement was for 22, but there's a one foot. So, they're asking, is it okay if we have 20 with a foot?
Generally, it is 22 feet. The only time you've allowed down to 20 is when there was the crustone or gravel on the sides. For four lots, so on smaller subdivisions of a project this size, usually it's 22. And that was after you reviewed your regulations with the fire department, that was their recommendation.
I am a little concerned looking at how tight that turn is and how narrow the road looks there. I think we'd want to go over that with our engineering experts and make sure that we have something that's, you know, that's safe. And it looks very tight up there. Did you want to add anything in particular?
No, I already said my piece on that one.
All right. Are there other comments from board members?
Yeah, so just to close that out, so are we saying 22 feet paved? Okay. Yeah, and I don't have anything additional to what's been discussed tonight.
All right, is there any discussion about the calculation of the, because we would need to have a motion for approving the density?
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Any other board members?
I think the math is right.
Abby, is there anything else that we need to discuss prior to a motion? Okay. All right, so I make a motion to, do you have anything else, Dave?
I'm just looking at the recommendations here. Inclusion of low-impact development techniques and infiltration best management practices. I mean, we're not at the overall approval, but we're giving guidance here. So, we talked about affordability, the road width, the sidewalk width. I think we're.
Okay. So, I make a motion to approve the maximum density of 40 residential dwellings as submitted in the preliminary OSRD plan application from the Green Company. The board finds this property is a suitable location for an age-restricted OSRD project. The board makes the following recommendations for modification to be incorporated into the final special permit application. One, consideration of offsite pedestrian improvements to provide connections beyond the project site to connect to nearby existing sidewalks, as we discussed. Provide an indoor community facility large enough for family and group gatherings, as we recently discussed. Two, incorporate a sidewalk within the development that's five feet wide. Inclusion of low-impact development techniques and infiltration best management practices. And that the applicant must meet the affordability requirement of providing at least six affordable units, as we discussed tonight. And the road pavement width shall be at least 22 feet wide paved.
Second. And before we vote on that, it just occurred to me that our requirement is that both sides of the road be, that there be a sidewalk on both sides. And we often have a discussion about whether we're flexible on that or not. So, I think we're flexible on that, and that, because it's.
Your subdivision regulations say you could waive the sidewalk on both sides, and then the funding be, go towards a sidewalk fund that can be used for the creation of a sidewalk elsewhere. So, that could be incorporated into one of these offsite connections.
But I don't think we are saying that we would waive both sides of the street, right?
Oh, I think it's alluded to. I believe that was alluded to when we talk about the improvements going into connection to existing sidewalks outside of the development. Maybe Colby Street down to Clavatree, down with, something to that effect.
So, I think I'm just clarifying, because I think you mentioned how you said, well, people will just, they'll all walk in the street, and they don't need the sidewalk. But I think we want this, we want a sidewalk. Definitely. Okay. Just want to make it clear, so there's no, all right, so that's, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. So, this is the approval of the preliminary application.
And I motion to close a public hearing.
Second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, the public hearing is closed. And, what time is it? We might, it's nine o'clock. Would we like to, let's take a five-minute break if anyone needs to take a natural break. We'll reconvene 9:05. Okay, the next item on our agenda is 240 University Avenue. An EIDR public hearing for facade changes, parking lot, and landscape improvements. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Luone. I'm with Planners, Designers, and Architects, representing the owners of 240. Can you hear me? I feel like this is high. I'm sorry. I'm here today to talk about our project, give you a quick overview. The architectural plans, do you have those? What I'm going to do today is talk about the building improvements and the overall project. I'll read through the waiver request, and then the civil engineer is here today to go over the site improvements. So, currently located at 240 University Ave., which I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, with all the development going on on the other side of the street. This building is currently vacant and has been vacant for a while. The owner's security lock distributors have bought the building, and they're looking to occupy the building for storage as well as the office area and as well as get, revitalize the other uses that were existing to the building. Right now, the building has internal code deficiencies, mechanical, electrical, which we're all taking care of. Sprinkler system's being brought up to date. HVAC is being brought up to date, and the building is currently being abated. We did have a hazmat survey done. Qualified contractors, DEP was notified, and we were following the correct protocol for that. And that is step one in this. As part of this project, they're also looking to clean up the outside of the exterior of the building. Yeah, that other one, the A, try that one. Site development. I might have said it's the A1.0. That's the building code sheet right now currently. I do have, and I do have copies that I could give the board of, I thought I submitted it, I apologize, of elevations that show the improvements that proposed to the exterior of the building. But in general, right now, the building is a brick facade and has some areas that are failing. The plan is to replace all the windows in kind with new EFIS panels above installation. We're redoing the entire roof. We're removing all old canopies off the building, cleaning the brick, as well as taking out old louvers that have nothing to do with the HVC anymore. And then, in two areas of the building, the brick seems to be falling off of the facade. It's failing. Those areas were replaced sometime a while ago due to the use in the building. We're proposing to add metal panel to infill those back in, metal panel to match the brick color. Both of those panels reside on the back and the railroad side of the building. Right now, other than security lock, they do not have any tenants, so we're not, any proposed signage or anything like that at this time. That's about it for the building renovations. Now, as far as the site goes, I'll let Drew go over that.
Good evening. Drew Garvin with Meridian Associates, Civil Engineer. For the site, I don't know if you can zoom in on this drawing, particularly the upper parking lots. So, most of the improvements, civil-wise, have to do with dealing with this parking lot. We're restriping it, proposing to restripe it, as well as, so that, in doing so, there's currently one handicap space. We're lifting that up to three spaces. The same number of spaces exist currently and are proposed, which is 55, including the, what will be the three new handicap spaces. There was one catch basin on the right side, the right, there's two parking areas. I'm going to go on the left and right. The right side had an existing catch basin that we, is, has a shallow sump, or it's at least all filled with silt. It's not functioning. So, we're proposing to replace that catch basin and add a new one on the other side as well as piping both those catch basins to a water treatment unit, just to treat that water. There's currently really no treatment other than what was, you know, whatever sump was provided on that existing catch basin. That does not, that's no longer work. And then, piping that water into the existing town system as it is currently piped. So, just to improve the water quality and the treatment for, you know, oils and solids that are, that build up in the parking area. We propose that. You can see the proposed landscaping improvements around the islands as well. On the front of the building, as well as the side here, in relation to the new handicap parking, we're providing access and ramps to the sidewalk. If you go further down to the entrance, to the university entrance side of the building, proposing what is the existing sidewalks to be ramped up to provide handicap access to that front entrance, which is now about three stairs. So, that would now be ramped up to meet that entrance. That's really the gist of the improvement. You can see there's a dumpster, an existing dumpster area pad right in the center of the building. That is to remain. And I don't know if you want to, I don't want to get ahead of myself. I know there's comments that we can address. I don't know what the best way is to address that, Abby, if you want to go through them, item by item.
Yeah, Abby, if you want to. I mean, I think the biggest thing was, when we looked at this before, it's just the standing water situation and the horrible condition of the parking lot.
Right. And again, I think one of the comments, not to get ahead of myself, was to repave it entirely, which I think the owner and Deacon, as a representative, is prepared to do and in agreement that that parking needs to be repaved. And at the same time, we can repitch things to the new drainage structures to accommodate that improvement.
Right. This site you didn't look at specifically before. You did have an application for just across the street, Dharma Street, there in that corner for 200 University. And the comments were the same, was for stormwater and drainage improvements and complete repaving of the parking lot. And so, our comments are similar for this site, too. Phil did provide a memo recommendation with recommending some changes, and we'd like to see the parking lot repaved. So, Phil's here to go through some of those questions. But I think ultimately, we would need to see revised plans submitted back to you before we make a more complete recommendation at a continued hearing.
Did you want to present anything now?
Do I want to?
Well, I just, what's the most, so it sounds like we're going to probably continue this to get more detailed plans. We can, you guys can go work it out.
I can read through it and read your comments. And we read through them fully, and we do read most of your recommendations. So, we're not here to kind of argue with them about, we can read through them.
I think if you guys can work it out, do we have board members? Do you want to ask any questions, or?
So, when, I don't know if you know, it was there before, University Pizza, I think was. So, in that parking lot area, getting to the sidewalk, there's like a lip there. You expect it to make it accessible?
Yes, and one of the recommendations was to provide an enlarged plan. Provide an enlarged grading plan for those areas with more detail, and we can do that, to show spot rates and how it gets up there correctly.
So, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the EIDR at 240 University Ave. To Tuesday, January 8, 2019, at 7:00 PM at 50 Carby Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. The hearing is continued as described. Thank you.
Should we request to be heard after the Green Company next time, or?
Before, before.
Before, sorry.
Although the place did clear out, because we're not as popular, I guess.
Well, that's, such is the nature of our meetings. Okay. The next item, next item on the agenda is 36 Phillips Way, EIDR for earth movement. Do we have someone here? Thank you. 36 Phillips Way, Aramo Building, earth material movement, public hearing for grading changes to the residential lot.
You ready?
Yep, we're ready. You can.
Phil, Aramo. I own the lot and building a house for a couple in Westwood. So, this lot, under a previous permit, this lot has, had as an existing slope. You can see how the topography changes, changes the slope. It's marked on the plan that the elevation changes. What happened here was, the change that is happening, that I'd like to do, is to break the slope with two retaining walls. the slope with two retaining walls that I've already gone through conservation to have that approved in conservation, and it's been approved. There's, there's two walls in this area, and then this, the upper wall continues around the back. The purpose of that is to break the grade. It's a pretty, it was a pretty steep grade to begin with, and to give the homeowner a flatter area of yard for their kids. Also, kind of a safety issue, there's going to be a fence along that retaining wall. The homeowner's going to do, actually. So, it's really, I'm breaking a grade, and I'm in front of you, not for an earth import special permit, but I'm in front of you because the grade from the top of the yard, where it's flat, to the bottom of the second retaining wall is like an 11-foot elevation change, tiered by two walls. So, I think when, when Mr. Doyle went out for a foundation inspect, and he saw this change of grade, and thought that I would need a special permit under the, under this section. I believe that's why I'm in front of you. And I think it's the best way to address the grade. Otherwise, it's a, it's a fairly sharp grade. It's a, it's a much better, it's an improved plan, from what it was, to, to break a grade with some walls. And so, I'm going to make those out of natural boulders. And I have some, we've done this before, like some, some places where we've done this. I'm going to have a person build it who builds boulders walls. He built some for me on Mill Street, tiered 86 Mill Street. He just finished some on Winter Street, exactly across from where the Green Company project is. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Abby, so this is how many, or how much earth, like how many cubic yards, right? The reason we're here is because it's more than?
This one was triggered by the increase in the, in the grade. The elevation is over five feet. Usually, you'll see these if someone's importing or exporting more than 200 cubic yards, but there's also, it's also triggered by if the grade is being raised more than five feet. We have asked, and that was one of the comments in Phil's review, was to provide that calculation to verify that it's not needing that calculation. But when the building commissioner looked at this, his forwarding it to the planning board as an earth movement was because of the increase in the grade.
And we have, conservation has already issued an order of conditions?
Yeah, correct.
So, we're increasing the grade with local soil? You're just moving it around?
Correct. And actually, you know, in reality, I'm not su, I, I think we're actually softening the grade, because instead of a grade like this now, it is going to be a grade that tiers four feet, tiers four feet, flat. So, it's a, it's a, it's a tiered grade now, as opposed to a sloped grade, which is preferable for safety, and I think in for erosion. I think that's why the, the conservation liked it.
So, you're building a fence just towards the house on that first wall?
Yeah. Actually, the owner's going to do it. It's not required, because it's a code thing. It's a building code thing that doesn't require a fence, but for his kid's safety, he was going to do that as part of the project.
What is the threshold for requiring it? The height?
It's, uh, well, railing on a porch is three feet, but in a yard, I'm not sure there is.
Well, we've had that before. I can't remember.
Is the lawn walkway really a three-foot, three-foot, requires fence or, or rail? But this is not walkway.
Right. This is a lands, this is a landscape.
Right. So, you're not importing any soil?
Or exporting.
Or exporting?
I'm not exporting. I may import 50 yards, but I'm nowhere close to 200 yards.
Okay.
So, I was in front of you for the section about the grade change.
And then, were the, did you make comments on the catch basin and erosion control? Did you already take care of that? Is it?
That was a, one of the recommendations was to protect the catch basin.
Yeah. Here, that's one of the.
There's a catch basin down in front of, two lots down the road from me, on, on that side. I'm down in a, in kind of a gully. We would want to protect it maybe from construction vehicles loosening mud onto the road, and then it might get into the catch basin, but it wouldn't be flowing off of my site, actually. Because it would be, it would have to flow uphill to get to the cul-de-sac.
Any, any other questions? Could I have a motion? Or should we?
Should we talk about some of these conditions? Because it seems, especially because some of the calculations found that it's, what's triggering this is the, is the different levels of, of walls that are going to be putting in. So, the, Phil provided us a summary and then, but I'm not sure if all of these conditions apply under the current situation. Abby, did you want to comment on that? Because it seems we have a number of conditions.
Right. I had prepared 12 standard conditions that you used, but yes, I guess if the twarks aren't coming in. But the first one was to provide the certification that the, for the project engineer, that they're not exceeding that 200 cubic yards. Did you provide that at the building permit stage? I'm just asking the applicant. Usually, at the building permit stage, if they're not, they provide an affidavit from the engineer that they're not triggering that. And then, number two, any modifications would require going back to the Conservation Commission. In the, in the catch basin, for that protection, that was still our recommendation to do that
So, so we observed that the, there's been work on the site. So, there's a catch basin adjacent to the site. Chris, Chris went to the site, but he noticed a lot of sediment around that catch basin. So, I didn't know if it was.
It was from the other side. It's recently completed. I actually called, I think I brought it up to Todd. The catch basin's on the other side of the road, especially in front of them, have a lot of silt in front of them, need to be cleaned. It's a town road right now, so I did bring it to Todd to tell you. And I told him I'd go clean it, but it just came from a previous construction site that is just finishing up. They, they seeded kind of late, and there was a lot of runoff that actually, the initial concern I had was that it was, it was undermining the road, and it's newly accepted, so I didn't want that to be a problem, because it was, I built the road. So, they've actually repaired that, like they filled in the undermining, but there's a lot of silt in front of the catch basin that is upgraded from, from me, really. But I'm going to clean it anyways, because it's, so if, if we want a silt, whatever we call it, said, silt sack, under a catch basin, I can do that. I'm not sure that, but I'm, I don't think my, my site doesn't run off into the road. The road runs off into my site. So, really, there's no, I can't create silt unless it comes off tires, but I do have a construction entrance as required by the conservation. So, it's clean. My, my site is very clean. There was a problem with some silt on the other side. Yeah. So, so, this is another lot that, which the tennis court is on. You guys might be familiar with the Cronin's tennis court. Then, at the entrance to the Cronin's, the previous Cronin home driveway, there's a catch basin, and then there's one directly across from it, right about here. This house that was just, yeah, this house that was just constructed had a lot of runoff, because this house is upgraded from the street. You can see that grade?
I don't know if there was any. So, if you can clean it, then?
Yeah, you can clean it. So, I, I did, I did want to add one more.
We would, we would like to see a detail of that, of that older wall, just to make sure that it's, you know, sufficient for the need.
So, I'm waiting on a building permit for that, so it would be within the building permit.
Okay. Can we just get a copy of that?
Sure. And then, do we need all the other conditions with regards to transport of dirt? But it seems, sounds like it's under the, the amount, right?
It's fine the way it is. Just leave them all in there. If he doesn't put it, we follow these guys.
Sure. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay. I make a motion to approve the EIDR for grading work at 36 Phillips Way, as submitted on the plan with the following conditions of approval. One, the, the, the project engineer shall provide, do I need to read?
No, I think we can.
Just the statement.
With the added one on the wall.
Yeah, so we'll add the, the additional wall detail along with the conditions.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing for 36 Phillips Way.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed? Any abstentions?
Should I file that detail within it? Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to review the open space and recreation plan.
So, Abby, we discussed we were going to put some of the goals and objectives up on the board. So, essentially, we had the open space and recreation steering committee met on November 15th. We reviewed the plan as draft, and then we made final comments, and then, so the revised plan is being presented to you this evening. Within the plan, there are goals and objectives that we should review in detail, and also there are some, some topics that we, we would just want to make sure that we're comfortable conclud, including within. So, we are the, Abby, we're the final approvers for, for this? Is that correct?
The planning board approves it, and then we would like to forward it to town meeting.
Town meeting.
So, about? It was about a year ago when the open space and recreation steering committee was established, and Brian was the planning board's representative. Steve Illenoff, the chairman of that committee, is here tonight also. There was also various other members from other boards and committees in town, such as from the Recreation Commission, Conservation Commission. They did meet throughout the year. They had a survey about a year ago. They had their vision session on February 1st of last year, and then they did work with a consultant and the committee to develop these goals, and they met most recently on November 15th, and made some final edits to the document. And you, you're just, you had the, in your electronic packet, you had the version from November, and then there's some more final updates that you received tonight, the hard copy of. So, there are general goals, goals that are focused on recreation, and then also goals focused on the open space. So, ultimately, I'd request that you review this and continue your hearing till your January 29th meeting, I think, to allow more time for you to review this, and then also any other input that we might receive from, from anyone else during that time. But I think Steve and Nora here tonight, if they want to add anything else. But one of the goals, see, we have the two general goals, and one of them that came out of the committee was to pursue the Community Preservation Act. That is essentially a, that requires a town meeting vote in itself. So, this is reviewing the plan with various goals, and that's one of the goals in the, in the plan, was to pursue this CPA program that requires town meeting approval. Nora, do you want to go through some more of these goals tonight?
So, what I just wanted to do is just add a couple of comments. Brian knows that when we met with the Open Space and Recreation Planning Commission for their last meeting on November 7th, the commission recommended that the planning board adopt the plan as revised, and they went through several revisions at that meeting. I've now incorporated those revisions into this document that you have there, and I've posted on the town's website, this revised version. But this is your starting point. This is where the planning board receives the document from the Open Space Recreation Planning Commission, and now you take it from here. And you review the goals, the objectives, the strategies, the action plan, and decide if you want to see anything done in a different way. I also recommend that you open up to the public. We, I think we had six meetings of the open space and planning, open space and recreation planning committee meeting. They were not overly attended by public members, so this is an opportunity for the public to have their say about the plan. So, I encourage residents to review the document that they can download online, and I encourage all the planning board members to look at it closely. There are, a lot of the goals and objectives are the same that were in there in the 2000 plan. Some of them have been updated. The one that I think requires the most scrutiny is the overarching goal of pursuing the Community Preservation Act. And I think that requires some serious consideration by this board. And I think you probably want to not only hear from residents, but you probably want to hear from other town boards. You probably want to hear from the long-range planning committee on how they feel about that. A lot of the other recommendations of what you would expect, take the, in the recreation area, take the fields we have and improve them to the greatest extent, look for additional fields where we can have them. Something new in this plan is recreation goal of establishing an indoor recreation facility, something we have never had in town. And there's also a goal in here to pursue and other options for ice skating, whether that's an indoor rink, an outdoor rink, or some shared facilities with another town. So, this, this gets into more detailed plans for recreation, for open space. It talks about continuing to acquire significant properties. In 2000, the Open Space and Recreation Plan was focused very heavily on acquiring land and acquiring conservation easements over land. This plan has a slightly different tact to it. We do have a lot of conservation land now, and this plan calls for better management of that land as the primary goal. And it calls for the establishment of, I think they call them conservation land management plans for each of the conservation areas in town. I believe there are 37 of them. So, that's, that's their focus. All the other goals of continuing to acquire land and protect the environment, protect habitat are still in here, but the goal of managing the property, conservation properties rises to the top on the conservation end. So, I encourage you to take a look at this. Send back any questions, any comments. If there's additional information you're looking for that you need to review this, let Abby know, and we'll be sure to get it for you. And then, if you could continue your hearing to January 29th, and then hopefully, you'll, you'll have all your questions answered by then, and maybe you'll be in a position to move this forward.
I'm, I'm curious, so with the overarching goal with the Community Preservation Act, kind of how did that, is that a, because we've identified so many things that we don't have any funding for, and kind of like, how does that?
So, so that was a goal of the 2000 comprehensive plan, but I think it rose higher, because this plan calls for more acquisition of, acquisition or development of recreational facilities. Now, I will point out that the Community Preservation Act has four purposes. One is for acquisition of land for conservation. Another is for development of outdoor recreational facilities. Another is for historic preservation, and the fourth is affordable housing. So, those are all things that we would like to do. Community Preservation Act provides an opportunity to raise funds to do just that. What it doesn't do is provide funding for indoor recreational facilities. So, it couldn't help us build a community recreational facility. It couldn't help us build an indoor skating rink. So, those are two things it couldn't do, but it could do a lot of other things, and a lot of the goals in the plan that were called for in 2000 really have not been advanced to the extent that they were hoped for in 2000, because there has not been sufficient funding. If we were to adopt the Community Preservation Act, just, I, I don't know how much you know about, but it's a state law that allows town to impose a surcharge of anywhere between 1% and 3% on real estate taxes. So, if you were a taxpayer who was... So if you were a taxpayer who was being billed $10,000 a year for your property tax, you would be billed $10,100 a year if it was a 1% surcharge. So there would be additional fee to each property owner, in that case of about $100, about $100 per $10,000 of tax bill that they already received. If we were to do that, it would net the town, this Community Preservation Act fund of about $700,000 a year. It could then be applied towards each of those four goals that I mentioned. It would have to be a committee that was set up to discuss what projects would be appropriate to spend that money on. And then it would have to go to town meeting for approval. Now, there's also a state fund, state CPA fund. There's, whenever you have a transaction that requires the recording of a document at a registry of deeds, there's a fee that's charged for that recording. And a portion of that fee goes to the state's Community Preservation Act. And the sum of those fees are then redistributed to towns and cities that have adopted the CPA. So I think there are 172 towns now, towns and cities in Massachusetts that have adopted it. So they get to share the funds that are collected. I think this, this plan says that over the past 18 years since the CPA was adopted, Westwood property owners have contributed about $1 million to that state fund. And that money then is being dispersed throughout the state to other towns that have adopted the CPA. Westwood doesn't see any of that. If we were to adopt the CPA, we'd get some of that money back. It's hard to say exactly what it is. The matches vary from year to year. It's project dependent and depends on how much money came in in the state. I will point out that 18 years ago, the first towns that signed on to this, they were getting 100% matches. So for the, if we raised $700,000 and we allocated it to four different projects and we had then applied to the state, we might have gotten another $700,000 back. That's not the case now. The match is at best 20%, and it has been as low as about 12%. It's hard to say where it's going to go from here. There have been bills that have talked about putting additional funding into that so the match could go back up. There are a lot of factors that need to be weighed. It needs to be very carefully considered. And we also have to decide if now is the time to do it or not. So that this, this plan can be adopted to say pursue the Community Preservation Act, that doesn't mean that we have to take it to a vote at the next meeting. Or maybe it means that the planning board would like to support that. That's the, the kind of discussion. You have to give some thought to how you feel about the Community Preservation Act and how strongly it should be promoted in this plan.
How, how does this plan fit in with the comprehensive plan? So would we, would this, is this something we're looking to approve first? Or what I'm thinking is that there are elements of, you know, obviously CPA applies to other areas. Those areas are likely to produce recommendations in the comprehensive plan. And if you really, if we believe that's a big solution for the community, then you'd want to, it should come as an implementation of the comprehensive.
It should, it should come as, if, if that's the way you're going, then it should be in both of them. And if it's something that you think is worth further study, you can say that in both of them as well. That you're not prepared to say jump in with both feet. Or you're saying that now is absolutely the time and we're, you know, in need of, grabbing hold of these funds now. That's a decision you need to make. The com, the open space recreation plan should be adopted prior to the adoption of the comprehensive plan. This should, once it's adopted, it should educate the, a couple of elements in the plan, the natural and cultural resource element and the services and facilities element. That, this plan should help guide that. But this should be adopted first. We did the same thing in 2000 when we adopted the comprehensive plan. The precursor was the open space and recreation plan. And the adoption of this plan, there's some very specific state standards that have to be applied to this plan. Once the planning board adopts it, it will be forwarded to the state for review. It actually needs to be reviewed and approved by the state before we become eligible to apply for grants. So you want to get that done before you move on with the number of plans.
So, um, so I understand this. The first goal is to pursue or pursue and obtain?
Well, it's to pursue adoption of the.
So if it doesn't pass a town meeting, are any of the other goals doable financially?
They're all.
Or is it change everything?
It doesn't change everything. So the, if we had the Community Preservation Act in place and we had funds set aside, that would be one source of funding that could be applied to the different goals that are here. Say, one of the goals is to improve the fields at Thurston by adding lighting, possibly putting down artificial turf. You need a funding source for that. It could be the Community Preservation Act, but it could also be a specific capital improvement request at town meeting for that work. So it's not, whether you approve the CPA or not, whether you recommend, I shouldn't say, whether you recommend that the town voters approve the CPA. Does it, if you recommend against that, it doesn't mean you can't accomplish what's in the plan. If you recommend in favor of it, it doesn't mean you automatically accomplish what's in the plan either. It's just setting up another process, another way of doing it. The Community Preservation Act gets you a seat at the table to share the funds that come from the registry. But the funds that come on the town's end can either be acquired through the CPA without surcharge or they can be voluntarily voted on at town meeting for a specific project. So taxpayers have the ability to, to decide on projects either way.
It was a goal of the previous.
It was a goal of the previous plan. And in fact, it was put before the voters twice that I recall, and it was defeated on both occasions.
So it's a goal to discuss this every meeting then? The, um, this plan, what we'll talk about every meeting and then vote on it and at the end of January?
If you, yes. If you are, if you feel like you're in a position to vote on it on January 29th, that would be ideal because once the, the planning board has adopted this, we would be able to then put it for town meetings endorsement. When you have a plan, like the open space plan or like the comprehensive plan, it's important not just to have the planning board members say that this is the direction we're going in. It's important to have the full town voters endorse the plan, accept it, and say that this is the direction we want to go in and we support the planning board's recommendations here. So if you were to approve this by January 29th, we would be in a position to move it forward for the spring town meeting. If you feel you need more time than that, you can take more time and we can send it to the, the voters at a later date. I don't want to rush you through this, but I encourage you to look at it and see if it's something that you could do because I think it would be, it would be helpful to send this to town meeting.
Steve, would you like to add?
I just clarified a few points. The first time it went before the town, it was a, a town election. And, and it was defeated. The second time, we went to the town meeting and it didn't get to the town meeting. So you, you have to do both and you can do it in either order. You can, you can have the election and then the town meeting or have the town meeting and then the election. It doesn't really matter. And, and I'm not sure, but we keep saying 1% to 3%, but it's actually up to 3%. So you could go half a percent, a quarter percent, whatever. But most towns, a lot of towns just, just do the 1%. There are some who do the 3% and you actually get an extra bonus if you do the 3%.
So is this a hearing that, that we should make a motion to?
I think if there's anyone, any public comment or anyone else, anyone like to? No public comments today. We'll get this out to people and see what kind of feedback there is and then we can have.
And Abby, we should add a link to the.
Right. I can, it sounds like it's posted to the website, but we can update it more and promote it. Your continued date, I think the older version, the November date was the one that was on the website earlier.
This is on the open space recreation planning committee website. I recommend you put it on the planning board website.
On the planning board, okay.
You also, you have a meeting on January 8th.
You could continue this to your January 8th meeting if you want to review it.
January 8th and then January 29th.
So I also want to add that this is not final in that there might be typos and other little corrections like that in there. But the goals are all in there. That's firmly established. And that's everything that the open space and recreation planning committee agreed upon. So hopefully everyone finds those goals acceptable. If there's any sort of major change, I don't know. We have to probably go back to the, to the committee and, and see if we can get agreement.
I forgot to mention this one other thing. There's an ADA requirement that goes as part of this plan. The consultant sent that today to the selectman's office. It has not yet been incorporated. So I will add that and post that to the website as well.
Okay. Thank you, Nora. So I make a motion to continue the, the hearing and discussion for this to the January 8th planning board meeting at Carby Street.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, this hearing is continued until January 8th at Carby Street. The next item on the agenda, number five, Morgan Farman Estates, OSRD EIDR divinity subdivision request for a partial bond reduction for phase two. Abby, who's going to talk to this? Oh, sorry.
Phil did provide our recommendation. He did perform an inspection based on the work from the last reduction, which was a little over a year ago. So based on that work, estimating the remaining work to amount to 2,000, 27,746. So I'd recommend that amount. That's a reduction of $20,900. And then I would add a condition that all the street trees be installed and planted by May 30th, 2019, or no further bond releases will be considered. Not all the trees have been planted and it's been a number of years.
Okay.
Right. So I think in the meantime, I had asked for the developer to provide an updated street, tree planting plan. There's some confusion on what's been planted and what is proposed to be planted because there are some changes in the number from the original approval. It kind of left a planting plan to be finalized later. It hasn't been finalized yet. So we'd like to have a final landscape plan. Well, before he plants the trees, which is on May, May 30th, I would say.
Okay, so we're gonna, we want to reduce the bond. The trees have to be planted by May 30th and we need the plan in place.
So I would just, just reaffirm the fact that under phase one, they, they're required to have 40 trees. And phase two, this required to have 20 trees, based on.
There was an estimate, yeah, and there was an estimate that you'd find.
Right. So they've only provided, as of right now, they've only provided three in phase one and 13 in phase two.
Of the 60?
Yeah. So I just want to confirm that that's, that's what you're looking for.
That's why I asked when we were going to get the plan.
So can't we make the motion, we lower the bond when we get the plan?
Yes, you don't have to approve it.
No, but I mean, we can, contingent, you know, we can approve, we can recommend this. Lowering the bond based upon receipt of the plan.
The original subdivision left a condition of a final landscaping plan to be submitted to the town planner for approval. It's been a number of years and we don't have that.
Okay.
Final plan. So that's why when we had the last estimate, it was a guesstimate. Yes, we have, this one had marked out. I think this is when the developer came to you looking for a sidewalk waiver that you ultimately denied, showing trees planted in, in phase two, about every 30 feet. But it didn't show the full length of phase one, which is the first part of the subdivision.
That doesn't show 20 either.
It sounds like we need the plan before we can make the motion to release.
Okay.
Does anybody else disagree with?
So then I guess we'll just make a motion.
So I make a motion to continue.
It's not a hearing, you don't know.
Oh. All right, then no, no action.
Submit a landscape plan for approval. That way we'd have the plan before further bond reduction.
All right.
I'm in favor of that.
Without objection, it is so ordered. Onto item number six, review of zoning amendments to submit for inclusion in the annual town meeting warrant. Our favorite topic. Do we have? Before we open this memo, I mean, are there any additional requests for zoning amendments? No one, no one came to, no one brought anything here and has any, 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 any public comment? Steve, do you have a?
Are you doing the one on the garages?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. The storage of three more views.
Yeah. On the zoning, uh, by, uh, deficiencies in the, in the wording of the, of the zoning regulations are that it doesn't really define what a garage is, what residential storage is. It just says so many states. So the idea is you're not really changing what people can do. You're just defining it better. And so you need to define what a garage is. And I think it's just really number of garage doors is what you're concerned with.
Doors or bays?
Bay. Well, right. Right. You know, a double door and it's, it's two and a, a single door is, is one. And so worded appropriately, so you don't care how many cars they can get inside. It's, it's how many garage doors for individual cars that you can see. And parking on, on a residential lot, you really can't define it. And I'm not sure, is there? There used to be a regulation on how many cars you could leave overnight in, in a residential district. But that's not in our bylaws? Is that in the general bylaw?
I don't believe so. I think the, the zoning bylaw section that you're discussing, considering an amendment to, says you cannot store or park more than three cars on a residential lot. So that's cars in the driveway, it's cars in the yard, and it's cars in the garage. If you have a three-car garage and you have another car in the driveway, you're violating the bylaw. Traditionally, we only send someone to the zoning board for the special permit if they're looking to build a fourth garage. However, if someone calls and complains about a neighbor that has four cars in their driveway, it must be enforced because that's the way the bylaws written.
Four cars in the driveway or four cars in total?
So yeah, so it's.
Right. Visible cars.
In the past, yeah.
In the garage.
So this, this section, 4332, I, I thought the whole issue was that it says for four or more vehicle parking and storage of more than, and so that was the, the whole idea. You could have storage in your front yard if you have a big space. And so if it holds four cars, it's theoretically triggers this. But, so I think we have to work out the details of that and, but I mean, it's included, right? This is, we're gonna, we're gonna do it somehow, but do we?
Yes, I think in the, in the past, the, the building inspector did go around and if he saw more than three cars overnight outside, then he would issue a violation. So you want to decide, do you want to have a, the regulation that how many cars are visible outside overnight?
Well, the, the standard used to be who's parking on the street? There's no overnight, there's no overnight parking on the street between November and May. So if you were on the street, you would be ticketed. But if you were off the street on the property?
At, at one time, the, the building commissioner used to go around and, and find people who had too many cars in their driveway because I guess the idea is, you know, you have a driveway packed with cars, it looks like a parking lot in a residential neighborhood. Now, whether you want to do that or not, they say that, that's one consideration, whether you want to have anything like that. wanna have anything like that, the other consideration is how many garage doors you wanna see when you drive by, and, and another thing you wanna add is carports, we don't define carports, there was one in my neighborhood, and it had to go to the ZBA, because, and they probably didn't know what to do, but to just put up a carport, so that, that needs to be defined also.
So let me understand how this would play out here, because this is, it's what triggers a special permit, so what you would be saying is that someone had created this space for storage of like five vehicles without a special permit, right, that would be the basis of complaining about it and getting a fine or something like that, really it's intended to be perspective, so you're saying, let's make it be about how big the garage you wanna build, not about how many, how much you can store, because that's confusing, right?
Well, like you say, you could have a building with one door on it, and you could fit 15 cars in there.
Yeah, so that's something you're not concerned about, you're concerned about the appearance of the house, you know, a number of garage doors you all see in a row would be something that the town would be concerned about, because you don't wanna look at like a.
Are we worried about aesthetics from the street, or are we worried about the number of cars that are actually on the property?
I think it's the aesthetics from the street.
Why don't we pull up the article as we're in, because the trigger for this article is the special permit trigger, that's where, that's the, that's what drove this article.
I'm sorry, I forgot to save it to my files, I don't have access to all my files, the exact list, but you have a hard copy of the list, I printed it up for the board members tonight, I'm sorry, I don't have extra copies, but the exact section of the zoning bylaw is, section 4332 says private garage and/or the parking or storage area of more than three motor vehicles, or of more than one commercial vehicle with a gross vehicle weight of less than 26,000 pounds, but only where in connection with a principal use on the same premises, and then that shows in the chart that the single family or the residential properties need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, but I think the reason we'd like to bring this forward now is because questions have come up on interpretation of the zoning and how to enforce that, so the building commissioner needs more clear direction than the way the zoning bylaw was originally written.
So, the problem we are trying to solve with this change is that people complain to the building inspector, and it's not clear whether there's a violation or what he should do about it, and that's frustrating, am I getting it at the basic level?
Yeah, so there are two separate things here, there's one, how many garage doors can you build on your house, and then how many cars can you store outside, and that just says the and/or, and that combines them together and makes it very confusing.
But I don't think, are people calling up and saying, I don't like that they have a bunch of garage doors, no, that's like, I wanna put five cars in the front yard.
So I think what, to boil it down to the essentials, right now, if you have four cars anywhere on your property and you don't have a special permit, you're in violation. Our building commissioner is not going around town looking at every property to see if they have four cars, occasionally, someone will call in, knowing that this is the bylaw, and complain about a neighbor who has four cars, then the building commissioner has no choice but to enforce the bylaw in that case, the person who reinforces it again says, if you're gonna make me go for a special permit, I want every other resident in town who has four cars, it's just not practical, the way it's written, so the proposal is to figure out what it is you're trying to prevent, are you trying to prevent that fourth garage, or are you trying to prevent four cars, determine what it is you're looking for, and let's rewrite the bylaw to achieve the goal.
It might be one or the other, or it might be both.
Here's the thing though, if there were more cars in families now, I mean, most people have four cars, so do we just wanna up the number of cars?
So do we just wanna up the number of cars, or?
I agree, 'cause, you know, my family, we had two cars, all growing up, and we all got older, graduated, moved, and now you've got six cars at the same property that we only used to be two, it's just the way it goes.
Ms. Fusco, would you like to make a comment? We need the microphone, though.
Hi, Fran Fusco, 20 Pine Lane, wouldn't that be easy to find out what residences have four vehicles at their home with checking the excise taxes that the town receives in from the registry?
Yes, you could track the number of cars that a certain person owns, but.
Instead of the building inspector or commissioner going around checking neighborhoods?
But it won't show whether a college student has it away at school, it's just, it's taxed for Westwood, but it's nine months of the year, it's somewhere else, so you get into a whole, personally, I would just go with the garage doors, and I, I think you're opening up a huge can of worms.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it's very similar to the accessory apartment, only for family members, I think you're opening up a huge can of worms, this town is not prepared.
It gets.
And do, is it one night, that's it, and you're, you're in violation, so you get a ticket, or you get a fine or something, if you happen to have a lot of people over for one night, I don't know, it just seems really a silly thing for a town to delve into, people, if we're not getting constant problems and constant complaints for a particular address, I really don't think this is where the town should be reaching its arms into.
It seems to cross.
Four car and more garage, fine, but beyond that, my opinion is, let it go.
It seems to be trying to manage people's behavior instead of managing the built, you know, what's, what's there, the building, the property, the zoning, all those kinds of things.
It also seems onerous to the ZBA to keep hearing these things, and do you do it, oh, I want 30 days, or I want two weeks to be able to do this, or I just want the summer, 'cause my three college kids will be home with three cars.
I mean, I would think you'd do things like, what is the maximum size of a driveway, like, so you could say that your driveway can't be 50% of the lot, or something like that, and can the garage can't have more than three doors, I mean, you do it with structural things like that, and that also describes the aesthetics, but I don't think you can say, no one's allowed to own more than four cars, I think that's the wrong direction.
I agree with that, but my thing is about storage, I mean, as long as they're registered vehicles, I don't see the problem, you know, it's another thing, when you've got abandoned cars, old cars, parts cars on your property, that becomes a nuisance, as long as they're registered and driven, I don't see where we have any right to get involved in how many cars you can own on a property.
But even an unregistered car that a guy is working on in his garage that no one sees, I don't have a problem with that, it's not an issue for the rest of the town, but what this guy does with his one garage bay out of three.
Absolutely.
I don't see it, I don't, I don't see the problem.
Absolutely, yeah, again, like you said, we're trying to fix a problem that I don't see is a big problem, you know, I think we get some.
Create a solution for a problem without it existing.
Right, I think we just, we just gotta clarify the language of what triggers the special permit, and come down with a number, four car garage, that triggers it, and go from there, everything else, I don't think is in our purview.
Does that help you, Abby, to focus the?
I think that should stay on your list, and we can propose more language in the DNR.
Okay, well, you know, what you're saying in the memo here, you recommend that the split zoned lots, that we'd not worry about that, you wanna take that off the list?
I would like to focus on, the list I provided you based on what you talked about last week, I whittled it down a little bit, but this is for you to decide tonight, I think I would like to bring forward at this upcoming town meeting, whatever's highest priority at this time, I'd say the first three are the three that were disapproved by the Attorney General but approved by town meeting a year ago in November 2017, so I would, I would keep those, you've already done the work for those, the fifth article would be the one we just talked about, about the storage of vehicles on properties, number six, another one is, we realized the residential retirement community, the RRC zoning bylaw, that includes a special permit, we have no, currently we don't have affordability requirements, so I'd recommend we update that section to include the same one that we have in other special permit sections that outlines a clear formula for the 15% in, in the rounding, clarifies the rounding of, when you have the.
Right, so take the same language that's in all the other special permits?
Yes, and incorporate that. I had talked about before about lots in two zones, I think, you know, it's come up about clarifying the language on more restrictive district, but I'm just looking into what exactly how many properties that might impact, I would like to delay that until a further town meeting, and then, I'm missing my third page here, the project area footnote, I, I think that might open more questions than it's worth, I think it would be hard to bring forward at this time unless the board wants to suggest more language, we can keep working on it, but this was about what a project area entails, and try and look at defining that. Was there another one?
Nonconforming uses in structures.
Oh, yes, in the, the part on the nonconforming uses in structures, again, that was about clarifying language, so the ones I was pulling out were related to clarifying the bylaw, it wasn't related to changing it so much. But tonight, you should be prepared to vote on at least what articles, the names and titles for tonight, then we'll provide that to submit to the board of selectmen before the warrant closes on January 7th, and then on January 8th, we can start reviewing zoning more again, your public hearing is usually scheduled for the second February meeting.
Okay, so previously, we, this was our list that we approved, so basically, it's, do we strike seven, eight, and nine from this list, that's the decision that you're asking us to consider, is there no other, we don't need to change the wording of anything yet, this is to just the final list, the third final list, or actually, alright, so.
Abby, did you say strike, are you recommending striking Article 8? I don't think you said that, the one about nonconforming uses in structures?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay.
It's basically, we'd be only through six, it's just saying like, I recommend everything below this line out, so split zone lots.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Nonconforming uses in the footnote article. Does anybody, does anyone object to striking those three, so that we would only submit Articles One through Six? Would you, would you be able to come up with a, like, write up, again, like, what you would want out of that, I guess, is the thing, I think it's, there's, that's a contentious article, and we've tried to, we wanna, I think that there's, it would be good if we could address it, but I'm hearing from Abby that, I don't know, it feels like a lot of work for you to figure out now with all the other stuff, so is there a way that board members could help with that?
With it's written here, I thought, I thought we were going to go with clarifying the calculation and not stating explicitly that the same project couldn't be used more than once, I thought that clarifying the calculation would take care of the other, I might have misunderstood that at the last meeting.
You can't do one without the other for this.
We could, I mean, the project area in the bylaw, that is another section, it is in 9.5, that's talking about 50, so is that what you were trying to achieve, that's 50% of the gross floor area, that's where it talks about how much residential you can have, so it's 50% of the gross, gross project area, sorry, gross project area, so it's, it's more than.
The goal would just be to make sure that, under this, under the use of this, you couldn't reuse square footage that was already used in another project, and it sounded like the, the board was saying that it's implied by the bylaw.
Could I just point out that when you have a special permit on a property, that special permit becomes the zoning for that property, so, for instance, the 301 to 321 Washington Street property is within the local business B district, but the zoning for those parcels is now their FMUOD special permit, they can't do anything different with that land, because it's now zoned for FMUOD for the specific use they have, so they would not be able to reuse part of that project in another project.
Because it's already.
Because it's, that's, that's the zoning, so your zoning is the zoning on the map, unless you replace it, University Station is another example of that, so University Station is all within the industrial zone, however, you can't now take a piece of the property that was in University Station and use it for an industrial use, because that's not allowed under the U, was it, UAMUD bylaw, so that the, the special permit that you receive, or in the case of University Station, the approval they receive replaces the underlying zoning, so they would have to come back to this board in order to change that.
So you're saying that if you couldn't use, for example, the Islington Pizza Lot under the FMUOD, if they bought something across the street?
You could not, that's already accounted for, so 301 to 321 is one project, it has, the zoning is now no longer local business B, it is FMUOD special permit zoning, so that applies to that property, they can't change that property, they could come back to you and ask you to amend this special permit, but they can't just recalculate the property for a different use.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Where were you last meeting when we needed you? Thank you.
I just wanna probably know if that's exactly what was said at the last meeting.
I wanted to hear it from Nora.
I guess it's just the messenger.
I think, so, I think it's, the reason I kept, like, I wanna keep this going here was that it's, it's not obvious to everybody, so I think if, if we're okay with taking it out, let's, I mean, if we're okay with just having the six here now, if we're, if we are, if we have consensus.
I'm okay with the six.
On that, then let's, then we'll do that, but I didn't wanna, alright, good, so, do we need to make a motion on this, or?
Yes, she wrote for.
Yes, the articles, we are proposing, Article One, zoning amendments related to accessory uses. What? We will be dropping the articles that, seven, clarifies how to handle split zoned lots, eight, nonconforming uses in structures, cleaning up language relating to that, and Article Nine, modifying the FMUOD project area footnote in Section 9.5.9. So the articles that will be included, perimeter fence height, the garage area, the affordability requirement being added to the residential retirement community section of the bylaws, and then the three that had been approved by preused town meeting, which was the accessory uses in highway business, that's so there can be a cafeteria in the highway business district, building zoning amendment related to medical uses, the definitions of medical uses, and housekeeping amendments to correct errors or inconsistencies, all of which, those three articles were approved by a vote of town meeting and failed due to a procedural defect, failed to be approved by the Attorney General due to a procedural defect, because this board didn't continue the meeting properly, so.
So I make a motion to, to recommend the zoning articles as previously stated by David Atkins.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, and comprehensive plan, general update, do we have anything?
Yeah, I don't have any additional information at this time, I know I'll be working with the committee, now that this meeting's over, I'm trying to get a survey out, this will be a survey, townwide survey, and that'll be open until the vision session, we haven't yet scheduled the vision session, we first need to hire a consultant to run that, so we have to go up for an RFP that I'm working on, so in the next couple months, you'll hear more from us, the survey, the vision session, and then we'll be getting information out, and it'll be likely after the holidays.
And so for the, for the individual sections of the plan, can you just make sure that the people who are leading those sections, that they do reach out to the liaisons, the planning board liaisons, to include them if there's gonna be any. going to be any sort of a planning meeting, or if they're going to get together and discuss things about what next, just to let us know that, that we are aware of?
Okay, and I'm working on updating the website. I'll remind the steering committee members, your liaisons, to keep me in the loop if there's any other public meetings, that I'll make sure get posted on the town's general meeting calendar, and then also on the comprehensive plan page that we have created, and I'll start tracking those meetings and announcements.
Okay. Other business, I think, updates on Islington. In case anybody drove by there today, it is now, it's down, it's gone. Taylor Shop and Cafe Diva Building is gone.
Yes, right after, the following day after your last meeting, Phase 1, the town in Portuziello did close in that Phase 1. We got the approval from the state that all 12 residential units at 321 Washington Street were listed on the subsidized housing inventory. And so demolition's taking place now, and then the CVS construction will be the first building that would go up in Phase 1.
What is the fate of the bike rack that was removed?
The bike rack is in storage, as is the clock. The clock has actually been removed and sent back to the manufacturer, Electric Time, that's going to restore it and swap out the incandescent light for LED light, and then it'll be reinstalled when that side of the street is completed.
The bike rack will get reused? I just, someone asked me if they could have it...
It'll get reused, I don't know for sure it'll be reused...
They put it on your front lawn, Dave. They did that during the meeting.
Someone asked me if they could do that.
Public Works Department has the bike rack.
And then the Blue Heart Tavern, the developer is still working on submitting plans to me for review. He was first looking at office on the first floor, but then was now trying to look at providing retail on the first floor. So he's still working on submitting those final proposals to me for review, and then I would provide that to you as a conformance review.
Retail or restaurant.
Oh, retail or restaurant.
There's a restaurant possibility.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask, if retail's possible, then, because of the, the issue with the ADA, like, or just all the requirements, but if retail's possible, then restaurant, brew pub, tavern is possible.
So he's still pursuing auctions.
I've got two words for you, Titanic in Norwood Restaurant, but tiniest restaurant. Okay, meeting schedule?
Those dates look fine for me.
Okay, I know you don't know what you're doing every Tuesday for the rest of the year, but I just, I just kind of put together a schedule based on trying to meet twice a month, but had to avoid conflicts with the public hearings for FinCom. They're a couple of times a year, they're on Tuesday night, so in March, there's two sets of public hearings that conflicted DRC really. I had, March dates are back-to-back weeks, because the other, the first and fourth week are FinCom meetings. And then I just really avoided, I had to avoid election, elections, and the week of Thanksgiving, no, yeah, week of Thanksgiving, week of...
One in July and one in August. That's, yeah, that's a lot of meetings there.
Yes, but I suggested more, because you're going to be busy working on the comprehensive plan. If you don't need them, you can cancel them.
Going on what we've done in the past.
Normally, I would suggest in May, the first meeting in May, after town meeting, to take another look at your schedule as we get closer to the summer.
All right. Meeting schedule, anything else, meeting minutes?
I make a motion.
Do we have the meeting minutes from November 27?
Yeah, they're provided. Yeah, so I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from dated November 27, from the November 27 meeting.
Seven. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting minutes are approved. We have something from the Ped Bike Committee?
The pedestrian bike safety committee, they did meet last week on December 6, and they did, they had a recommendation to recommend restriping the eastbound side of High Street, 109, from one lane to two lane, from Summer Street to the traffic signal on Lauterbrook Drive, to test effectiveness of improving the traffic flow. This is in response to some nearby residential neighborhoods asking about limiting the turning signs, and the recommendation from the committee was to first try improving the traffic flow rather than adding more signage restrictions. Didn't think that would be as effective to first, at least try, try helping with...
So there's a lot of study been done in that area, right, that I heard the DPW had reported to the selectmen about the traffic studies they've done back in that area. Does, do you know if this, they talked about that in connection with this, or with the Ped Committee?
I don't think that they studied that street specifically. Oh, yeah, they did do, they did do traffic counts.
Yes, and this came out, I think from, there was a suggestion for a no-left turn during the morning rush hour from, onto High, onto High But then, I mean, and at Greater Screen, we like to, was it no-right? No, I think it was a no...
I thought it was off of Park Hill, it was, yeah. It was a one-way.
So the issue was cars going, yeah, down Farm, left on Pleasant...
Off, on Parks, taking a right onto Farm.
Yeah, trying to...
Cutting down Pleasant, Pleasant Valley?
Yeah, Pleasant Valley.
So the idea here is to try to, is to put two lanes after the light, to make it so that the traffic at the end of that will flow out faster to make it slow down.
Right, I, yeah, the suggested solution is trying to improve the traffic flow in High Street so that cars aren't cutting unnecessarily through these other shortcuts in neighborhoods.
So this, the history is, is a while back, they actually thought of widening High Street at that point, and even got money appropriated, but it was never spent for that purpose, so that there would be two lanes on each side of the road, so that you wouldn't drop a lane after going through the lights, heading, heading towards 128, and then having it open up again. So DPW director says he thinks that you can do it just by painting the lines, by moving them over and using up the breakdown lane, and without altering the road. So we're going to try that, just painting, repainting everything.
Sounds, is there any, any discussion, or...
Do we need to back this as Ped is...
We should, I think because of the history of...
We have a recommendation, yeah.
They have a recommendation, we should make a decision on whether we support it or not.
Right, if you support this recommendation, you should vote on that, vote on it, and then I would provide that recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, since the pedestrian bike safety committee is essentially a subcommittee of the planning board.
So I make a motion to recommend the town to restrip the eastbound side of Route 109 from one lane to two lanes, from Summer Street, traffic signal to Lauterbrook.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Are there any other committee reports? And Steve, Olenoff, or Chris, you guys, you are on the MBTA Advisory Committee, is there...
Oh, yeah, we haven't followed up on this. So I did meet with a number of representatives from the South Shore, and they're concerned about late-night trains. Turns out that if you leave from North Station, the last train out is at 12:10 and 12:15, whereas if you are taking one of the routes to, on the Middle Borough or the Plymouth or the Green Bush Lines, it's, some of them are early, it's 10:30, and others about 11:00. So they wanted late-night trains, and so they're trying to accomplish that by, right now, by not incurring any more cost for the MBTA, by moving the late, the last train later, and the next-to-last train a little bit further out. But obviously, there's a need for more service. So I also brought up the fact that the last train Saturday night and Sunday night is 11:10 from South Station to 128 Station, which, by the way, I took last Saturday night, and it was four cars packed with people. Something to do with the season, probably, but there, there is a need there, and so this is like a first step. So the question is, do we want to have this board or the selectmen send in a letter to the MBT Advisory Board saying that we, we support the later-night trains, and that this, we feel this is a first step to getting even more later-night service, and we're concerned about the, our own, on the Providence Line, the last train 11:10 on Saturday and Sunday nights is kind of, considering what a large, heavily traveled route it is, it should be later than that. So, do we want to just, you know, why don't we, if you, everyone agrees, then why don't we send a letter to the MBT Advisory Board saying that they, that we support that, because they would appreciate that?
I'll work with them.
I'll work with you on the letter.
Does everyone approve of drafting a letter?
Yep.
Do we... I also add that the Mass Start is undergoing a rear-road visioning process now, looking at what the future of commuter rail should be. And that's something that's happening now, and if you want to participate, there's opportunity to do that, and they're looking about at having more service, particularly within Route 128 and the basic future of commuter rail.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.